Good evening, everyone. First, can everyone hear me? Okay, great. My name is Damian Buchanan. I'm the chairman of the Pender County Planning Board, and welcome. Thank you for coming to our September Planning Board meeting. The first thing we're going to do, we have an agenda, but we're going to start off with a roll call. I am present, Buchanan. Mr. Satterfield?
Present.
Mr. Jordan?
Present.
Mr. Bowden is not here. Mr. Pitts?
Present.
Ms. Moscow's not here. Mr. Keeler?
Present.
Okay. Well, again, good evening. Thank you for coming. The Pender County Planning Board serves as an appointed board by the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning land use applications. We have two cases tonight. We also have a review of our upcoming comprehensive plan, which we'll review first. But let's, before we get going, I want to go over a few things for everyone to understand. There is a public comment prior to the cases, and then there's also public comment for every case that is heard. So that would be the sign up sheets. If you did not sign up and wanted to speak tonight about something, please come to the front here and sign in. But there is a posed time limitation for all the public hearing comments, which is limited to three minutes if you're an individual. If you are an HOA president or you represent an organization, you get five minutes. Now, the applicants are excluded from this time limitation because they need time to be able to explain their case and why it should be viewed favorably or unfavorably. And we'll have, Mr. Brantley will keep time for that, and there's also a timer up here. Now, when you come up and speak, please speak into the mic like I am so that everyone else hears you, and you also state your name and address before making your public comment. Now, those comments, we ask be limited to those issues concerning whether the rezoning, the tax amendment, or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Any cases that are, all cases that are heard tonight by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and unified development ordinance. The purpose of our hearing is to gather information so we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, the neighbors, and the community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the Unified Development Ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Certainly, certain mutually agreed upon conditions may be imposed on master development plans and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Now, before we get started, we always ask, are there any board members tonight that would stand to financially benefit from a decision that is made tonight?
No.
No. Okay, we'll continue with the public hearings. All right, we're going to stand for our invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you. Okay. We have an agenda in front of us with three public hearings regarding the Imagine Pender 2050 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and then two rezoning cases. Is there any conversation on the agenda? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Okay. The minutes from the last meeting, if there's any questions about that, hopefully everyone's been able to review those. If there is any changes or conversation about that, we'll hear them now. If not, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 5th meeting?
A second.
So we have Mr. Pitts with the motion. Gentlemen, again, these are new mics we've been blessed with, so press down on the mic to get the greened to speak into it. But we have a motion and a second for the minutes. All in favor of adopting the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the minutes are adopted. Mr. Brantley, are there any public comment for general public comment tonight?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move right into 8.1, the Imagine Pender 2050 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Mr. Brantley, will you be presenting that for us tonight?
No, sir. We have LeAnn and Emily with Clarion presenting this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us again.
Thank you so much. I put my water down here. It's a pleasure to be here. This is a really important start to the public adoption process for the Imagine Pender Comprehensive Plan update that we've got before you tonight. And I think I've got a presentation. Are you pulling that up?
Do you have the, you can proceed forward.
Perfect. Here we go. So first off, I just wanted to thank the Planning Board for your participation in this process. Several of you participated at the Steering Committee, the eight Steering Committee meetings over the course of this process. You received briefings from staff, from the consultant team at Milestones. You had a work session back in May to kind of receive the public review draft and provide some really good feedback that helped shape the plan in front of you today. And I'm going to be talking about the overall, the process tonight that we went through, the highlights of what's in the plan, and then some of the changes that occurred between the public review draft and the public hearing draft. So again, thank you for your involvement and input because it's very, very critical to the success of the plan. So again, I'll talk a little bit about the process, the contents and the framework, talk about those changes. And ultimately, what we're requesting tonight is for endorsement from the Planning Board for the Board of Commissioners to receive the plan and adopt. So this is about a 20-month process. As you'll see in just a moment, we're kind of in this last phase of work. So we have gone through the last kind of year or so, a little bit more, doing a lot of work to engage the community, working with the Steering Committee and staff on identifying the key policy issues, the new issues and opportunities that we wanted to be identifying and focusing on in this planning effort, drafting the plan, and then revising it so that we could be here at this point. And again, this is just kind of showing month by month, that 20-month process, those two engagement windows. We call those community engagement windows, number one, that was in the fall of last year, and number two, that was in the spring of this year. And again, we're in the final phases, that Phase Five, Adopt the Plan currently. So a little bit about the adoption process. This began really in July when there was a briefing to the Board of Commissioners and to the Planning Board about the public review draft, the feedback that we received from the community on that draft, and some of the suggested revisions there. There was also, at that point, a draft that was provided to, the public hearing draft that was provided to the Division of Coastal Management because this is a KAMA plan, so that has to also receive certification from DCM. So that occurred, this public hearing draft that you've got in your packet and that's available online was provided to them in early August. We have the September Planning Board meeting tonight. According to our state statute, the Planning Board's role is really to provide advising to the Board of County Commissioners, who are the governing body that ultimately adopt the plan. There is a scheduled public hearing with the Commissioners on October 6th that will follow this meeting. And then the Coastal Resources Commission certification would happen following that adoption, if the Board chooses to do so on the 6th. Just some kind of clarification about how the process works. What we typically do is the public hearing draft during this timeframe does not actually change. We don't modify the document itself. But if the Planning Board were to recommend adjustments to the plan, what we would do is take those recommended adjustments, put them in a memorandum that would go into the Board's packet for their October 6th meeting so that we could present the plan to them with your endorsement if you chose to do so, and whatever revisions you might want to be incorporated in the final adopted version of the plan so they can kind of understand what your recommendations were.
Mrs. King, may I stop you for a second here?
Sure, go ahead.
Can everyone hear Mrs. King as she's speaking? Is that mic arn?
Is that, is that good? Okay.
I don't know if the mics aren, but is it?
There's not a button here, it doesn't look like, so I think it's just on. Yeah.
I'm sorry, you may have to hover a little bit on that.
I will try to, yep, scooch in a little bit. There we go. Sorry about that.
Please continue.
Okay. So the purpose of the Imagine Pender Plan, a comprehensive land use plan, is an overarching policy guidance document. It looks long range, so it looks at a 20-year period out in the future. Where does the county want to grow? Where does it not want to grow? What types of land uses does it want to be supporting in different places? It is a policy document, and therefore it is intentionally flexible, so it provides a vision and goals. But it's not the same thing as your Unified Development Ordinance, which is actual regulations that have to be adhered to by property owners. The Comprehensive Plan does a couple of different things. It really sets the stage in terms of what the community wants to be achieving over the next 20 years and what the game plan is for achieving the vision and goals set out in the plan. That helps support, you can see in the planning cycle here, the second phase, which is really work priorities. Anything that the county might want to undertake in terms of departments working on particular aspects that are identified within the Comprehensive Plan. Some of those may require funding, so the budget and the CIP then come into play if those implementation items require resources. Once those resources are in place, those, they can be implemented. And then we recommend that every Comprehensive Plan be assessed and monitored over time to make sure you're achieving the vision and goals that were set out in the plan. And it's a cycle because, as you all know, change happens quickly. And usually every 10 years or so, most communities are looking at an update to their plan to manage new conditions and opportunities that are in front of them. For this Imagine Pender process, I mentioned we had two main rounds of engagement. There were multiple workshops that occurred in each of those windows. There were multiple workshops that occurred in each of those windows. We also had online engagement that was available to folks for several weeks, if not months. And you can see the numbers here in terms of the actual survey responses received for each of those engagement windows, and the in-person attendance at the meetings that were occurring during those different timeframes. So, this is a map and some of the photographs from the engagement activities that were conducted during those engagement windows. The first round of engagement, all 10 locations that are identified in the map in front of you, had activities during that first round. The second round of engagement, the five that are in green, were stations where the plan, unavailable, that we like to call it, the public review draft, was shared with the community, and inputs were received that helped shape the draft that's in front of you today. So, this is the table of contents for the plan. So, the Pender 2.0 is your currently adopted plan. This plan update would replace Pender 2.0. There are five main chapters. As you can see, there's an introduction. Chapter 2 sets out the community vision for the plan. Chapter 3 is the future land use section that sets out the map and different future land use categories that are applied throughout the county's jurisdiction. Chapter 4, the goals and policies of the plan, and then Chapter 5 is the specific implementation. And there's also an appendix that includes several things, including a glossary of terms that can be helpful. So, the plan framework, in the goals and kind of policy section, and in that vision chapter of the document, are some of the key pieces, and it's really kind of a hierarchy of sorts. So, at the top, we have the vision themes. That's what we call the highest level of plan framework to express the ideal aspirations of the plan. I like to call it like the cocktail speech of what we're trying to accomplish within the comprehensive plans. Then there are nine goals that set out specific outcomes that we're trying to achieve with the plan, and then policies or statements of commitment for the direction which the county wants to undertake with its decision-making. Actions are then specific implementation tasks that maybe members of the Planning Department or other county departments would be undertaking to implement the plan. So, at the top again are the vision themes, and there are three vision themes that help organize the document. They are coordinate growth, preservation, conservation, and infrastructure, support Pender County's fiscal health, and to maintain a high quality of life. And I won't read all the words on the screen, but these, and we have made some slight adjustments to these, you know, through the public review draft stage of the process, but these are the draft vision themes again. Coordinating growth, preservation, conservation, and infrastructure, really focusing on, focusing growth within growth areas where infrastructure is planned within the next two decades, and supporting conservation of other areas outside the county that are intended for more rural kind of uses. The second vision theme is supporting Pender County's fiscal health, so looking at leveraging your geographic position in the region and creating new opportunities for development and expansion of businesses that can help create a more balanced fiscal bottom line for the county. And then the third is maintaining a high quality of life, so thinking about all of the public services and facilities that are provided by the county, and making sure that those keep pace with the growth that you have ahead of you, and making sure that you're leveraging existing infrastructure and resources efficiently. These are the nine goals, or the goal names that are in the plan. There's more language under each of these within the plan document, but this really sets the stage for that, again, the outcomes that the plan is trying to achieve. So, the first goal is sustainable and managed growth. The second is planned public facilities and services. Third is expanded economic opportunities. Four is attainable housing choices. Five is supporting agricultural and working lands. Six is safe and efficient transportation. Seven's environmental conservation and resilience. Eight's community unity and civic engagement, and then nine is enhanced quality of life and community health. And so, the policies and actions kind of flow underneath each of these nine goals, which are kind of topic-focused. In total, under each of those nine goals, we have 31 policies, and those are policies that can be leveraged when you're reviewing a rezoning case or other kind of development cases that come before you to see if those align with the guidance of the plan. Again, this is a policy document, so it's not that it ties the hands of the Planning Board or the Board of Commissioners. You can choose to go counter to the plan, but again, this is guidance that is kind of recommended as you make decisions in the future about development projects and capital investments. There's a total of 114 actions under each of those nine goals, so a lot of different items that can be implemented to support the vision and goals of the plan. And the intention here is that some of these may require resources and staff time, and so that the county would have the opportunity to look at those on an annual basis and identify which priorities they wanted to be implementing based on resources and capacity that's available to support those efforts. The future land use map is a really important component of the comprehensive plan, so anytime you're looking at a development project, you're going to be looking at the future land use map and identifying which category applies to a piece of land, and what the guidance is with respect to that property. Again, this is not zoning. It doesn't limit necessarily what the, kind of, it's not the rules that apply to that property, but it provides guidance to you all as decision-makers and to the Commissioners as decision-makers as you make choices about such as a rezoning case. And you can see all of the various categories listed there for each of those. There is what we call a spread in the document that includes a description, the character intent and development pattern for each of those land use categories, and has some characteristics that you can see there. So, the primary and secondary uses, uses that are kind of discouraged, infrastructure that's intended to serve that development with respect to water and wastewater, densities, transportation, and parking. So, those are some of the building blocks for those different categories that can be used as guidance for making those decisions about different projects. So, now I'm just gonna share with you kind of a summary of some of the changes that have been incorporated in this public hearing draft that are different from the public review draft that we took out earlier in the spring of this year. And some of these are directly related to the, some of the guidance you provided at your May work session. So, the first change we have here is there's a change, there were two areas, rural neighborhood and rural crossroads, on the future land use map that were located around Pender Lee. And when we took the plan out to that community during the second round of engagement, we got a lot of guidance from them that that is, that was not the land use designation that they wanted to have in their community, and they wanted it to be rural agriculture. So, that was heard loud and clear, and that was changed on the map so that we could reflect the public's feedback for reduced density in those areas. Secondly, there was an expansion of the rural neighborhood category on the western side of Rocky Point, and the intent there is really to have better alignment with future infrastructure investments in the 421 corridor, and to be consistent with expected growth projection within that area. The fir-, excuse me, the third change was inclusion of the residential neighborhood category along 421 near the industry and commerce designations. So, that, and it's right kind of on 421, it's just north of that kind of gray area on the map, that allows for denser housing near employment opportunities, and to better reflect sewer line expansions that are going to be happening along 421 up to Blueberry Road. The fourth change is expansion of the rural neighborhood category up Shaw Highway, and that was really an update to reflect some of the existing development patterns that are there today, and that was also something, we got some guidance from you all back at the May work session. Fifth is expansion of coastal neighborhood. That's also an opportunity to better capture existing development patterns east of 17, kind of bringing it up to the corridor and a lot of places. The majority of land in that area is already developed or has, you know, encumbrances with approved projects, and so there's not a lot of redevelopment we expect to happen within there, so we wanted to better capture the existing development pattern that exists in that area today. And six, we've got the increase of neighborhood center along Highway 17, so that provides more opportunity for commercial and industrial development, again, to diversify the tax base in Pender County. And then, there are a couple of other kind of text changes that are outside the future land use map. One of those is providing some additional narrative and kind of policy guidance with the North Carolina General Statute with the new bill, Senate Bill 382, that was adopted last year, so it provides an alignment with that. Secondly, there was an adjustment to the policy addressing package treatment plants in the public hearing draft to make it clear that they're discouraged except for areas where density is supported in, on the future land use map, and expansion of centralized sewer is unlikely in the near future. And then there were some general formatting and kind of quality control measures as we did a reread of the plan. So, that's the summary of all of the adjustments that happened between the public review draft and the public hearing draft that we have in front of you tonight. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have. Again, you know, what we're asking for this evening is an endorsement of the plan, and I'm happy to discuss any kind of adjustments that you might want to make as you endorse it for board consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Can you go back two slides?
Sure.
I'm sorry, one more slide.
This one.
So, these were the changes of the future land use map?
Correct.
And this came from community engagement from, from the Planning Board and also from the Commissioners?
Right, and I think that there were some, we got community feedback, we got feedback from the Planning Board, and I believe the Commissioners might have also been involved in some of those discussions as well.
Okay. And can you go to the next slide, please? Can you repeat again the importance of NC General Statute SB 382?
Yes, so this is a new statutory requirement for all communities within the state of North Carolina that basically limits the local government's ability to what we call downzone property. So, you cannot effectively reduce development potential per zoning. So, this is a comprehensive plan update, which is different than zoning, so that's important to make that distinction. However, there are some components of your Unified Development Ordinance that speak directly to the comprehensive plan, currently the adopted one, which is Pender 2.0, and we wanted to make sure that we were in alignment with that regulatory requirement, that you cannot reduce development potential per your, any kind of zoning changes, because it directly points to the comprehensive plan.
For the audience, SB 382 does not allow local municipalities to downzone properties or require a property owner to do anything that we may say needs to be done now without their permission.
Correct.
So, if we wanted to put some type of corridor tree requirement in there along 17, this bill says we cannot do that unless the owner, all the owners agree to it. So, it's really a restrictive bill over local government zoning and ability to enforce their zoning or change zoning.
That's correct, and it's very new, and the way it's written, there is some...
Less than a year old.
You know, we will see how it gets interpreted in terms of, you know, case law if that were to happen, so, but that's generally speaking, I think, an accurate statement about what that bill includes.
And if I may, so one thing, just to add for the local context within the UDO, so what, part of this section intends is to clarify one thing, specific to plan developments. And so, as the Board knows, plan developments require master plan approval from this body. And so, what determines and informs what can be done in those districts is based on the underlying future land use category. So, with a change in the future land use plan, we're essentially changing what informs what can be done in those districts. So, there's a provision included in this plan, which essentially allows those applicants or developments to refer back to the previous comprehensive plan map, or they could elect to pursue the new map.
Right, essentially grandfathering them in to be in compliance with Senate Bill 382.
Okay. And the package treatment plants, what was the, what does the current comprehensive plan state about package treatment plants?
That's a really good question, and I, I might have to rely on some of my colleagues or, Justin, I'm not sure if that's something that's off the top of mind for you. I don't know if the current comprehensive plan actually had an explicit policy related to private wastewater systems. Obviously, they've been around for, you know, a number of years and are currently in service in many places throughout the county, so I could, we can kind of take a look at that and see if we can dig...
Why did, why did this become important then to include this in the comprehensive plan if it wasn't something that was, you know, really on the radar?
Cool, good question. So, I think that one of the critical issues that came up early in this process and was kind of heard throughout from the public is that the development that was occurring within the county was kind of outpacing or ahead of infrastructure that was in place to serve it. And what that often results in is private systems being developed, which kind of limits the county's ability to maintain growth at kind of the scale and pace and kind of pattern that it wants to. So, this, the intention of this policy is really to say, we've identified the areas that we want to be growing in, those very much align with the infrastructure that's planned to serve that growth, so having that better alignment, both in terms of location and kind of timing. And so, this policy, what it now states is basically, if there's a growth area identified on the plan, and there's not, there's not kind of a near-term plan to extend water and sewer services to that area, then it makes sense to be providing, for a private wastewater system to be serving that area, as opposed to having kind of growth sporadically kind of fragmented throughout the county. I think that was, that's the intention of the policy, is just kind of better alignment of growth and where infrastructure is provided.
Wouldn't the future land use map already kind of direct that?
It does. This is just another level of specificity about that recommendation. Yes, okay, thank you. So, my colleague Emily was able to look this up pretty quickly. So, in Pender 2.0, the currently adopted plan, Policy 41M on page 433, package treatment plants, the county will discourage the use of package treatment plants and only allow such where expansion of centralized public and or private sewer system is not feasible. So, it's fairly, it's, a few words are different, but I think the intent of that policy is the same.
And, and to add to that, in the, the intent of the new language is to put special attention to that future land use map in terms of those desired growth areas, whereas previously, it just generally supported it where septic was unsuitable or where sewer was not available.
But if the county's not looking to put sewer there, there's probably a reason why they're not extending it to it, and flooding issues, putting package plants in places where, you know, property doesn't perk, and there was no assessment on where all these orange areas, because I see in Rocky Point, it extended a huge, huge gap, but that's known flood areas, as well as along Shaw Highway, that there was increased density that was allowed by this future land use plan. And the allowance or the loosening of the language that allows for, if there's no plan for a sewer, to kind of pave the way for those package plants to be proposed, and they're consistent with the land use plan, then that kind of, with our planning, and if they're saying no to sewer in certain areas due to some mitigating factor, this supersedes any of those plans or mitigating factors. So, I think that that would be a disservice to loosen the language, to allow for the package plants where the county, as the lead, is not planning on putting sewer for whatever that reason is, regardless of what the, this map or the zoning map says that the development we want to, when we, you know, through this whole 12, 20 months, or 17 months, we said that we haven't gone parcel by parcel to see about perk rate, flooding, all those other factors. So, if we're gonna do broad strokes, we shouldn't loosen it so that it can allow for more broad strokes, because these developers are gonna come in, try to do package plants, and then try to offload to the county, which, at a certain point, because they're not gonna want to maintain, or the HOA is not gonna maintain. So, I, I don't know where, you know, that language loosened, but I don't know that that's positive.
Do you, the language, did that come from anywhere specifically that you can remember?
I don't think there was an individual necessarily that it came from. I think it was part of discussions that came out of the public review... I think it was part of discussions that came out of the public review draft, and probably some, you know, there are a lot of different reasons, I think, why the, your- Pender County Utilities might choose not to, at a certain time, provide centralized sewer. Some of it could be kind of cost-related. It could be that the site conditions are okay. It's just that it's not within their capital investment planning period. So I think the idea was providing some level of flexibility because you're in a high-growth period, and it's difficult for infrastructure to kind of keep pace with growth, but with keeping it within the growth area. I think it was, it was a balancing act. I think that was the intent of this.
There's a handful of zoning right now that allows for a package plant or something like this by right, or by special use, I think, and there's only a handful of them. You know, I think it's RP or RA. So you're not going to, you're not going to infringe on that. You're just saying that if we have a package plant project coming forward, that it probably needs to be within a larger, on the map, identified as an area of growth, because the Pender County Utilities may not, they may want to run sewer there. They just don't have the financial ability, or this doesn't make sense in their strategic plan.
But if we don't have the money to run sewer, we don't have the money to build more roads or bigger roads or more schools. So I think it all goes hand in hand with infrastructure.
Well, the county doesn't build roads to begin with, and-
State, county, municipality, if there's no money to put in more sewer, then there's probably not the other money.
Mr. Brantley, is there a, a master, like sewer plan for Pender County? I know they're expanding some of it up the 421 corridor, but to my knowledge, everything here on the east side of the county is private, and it's not county-run.
So there, there is discussions to plan on doing, the county's working on a strategic plan to address a lot of things across the board. One of the things that they're talking about is, is doing a master plan for water and sewer at the county level. So on the east side of the county, the sewer provider is Pluris, which is a private provider. On the western side of the county, there is a wastewater and water treatment facility near the county line in the Commerce Park. The county is currently expanding both water and sewer up that 421 corridor, which will support more growth along that corridor, which is reflected in this map. So one of the big benefits of this process was engaging directly with utilities, making sure that there's alignment with the goals of the planning side of things and the utility provision side of things, so that we're on the same page as far as identifying those growth areas that they have the potential to serve. If that answers your question.
Thank you.
One other thing, just to clarify, so a private sewage treatment facility can, couldn't be permitted with a special use permit in the RP District, which is our medium-density residential district, as well as in the PD District and the RM District, which is similar to PD, but we don't see that very often.
And those are regional plants or those package plants?
Those are sewer treatment facilities.
Because Pluris is not a package plant.
Right.
Falls Mist is a package plant.
Falls Mist would be a package plant. Lanes Ferry is another project in the Rocky Point area that would be considered a package plant. A package plant is intended to provide that service for that project, whereas the private facility like Pluris can provide that service beyond a certain neighborhood or a specific project.
Okay. Any other comments or questions at this time?
I have a few questions.
Sure, go take it away.
Leanne, I'm going to start on the rural agricultural characteristics. And I just noticed one of the secondary uses is listed as an individual rural-scale business. It says individual rural-scale business. I'm trying to figure out, what is that? To me, it's more like something that's going to support the rural community from a, like farming perspective, or feed, or whatever. I just wonder if we should have some type of clarification of what that just examples. Obviously not tying, you know, it would be more of a such as, not as a has-to-be kind of thing, but just wondering.
What page are you on there?
I'm on page, uh-
Twenty-seven.
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 Yeah, okay, so rural agricultural characteristics, the secondary uses include agricultural, excuse me, include individual rural-scale businesses. One thing that we could do, if you think that that's not clarifying enough, is provide, there is a glossary of terms in this document, and so we could provide some examples of those types of uses. Generally speaking, in a comprehensive plan, we do not try to get as specific as what you might experience looking at a use table in the zoning ordinance. It's not going to be that, because it's supposed to provide guidance, not be prescriptive, so to speak. But we do want to, because this is a rural category, the intention is that you're not going to see the same types of commercial uses you'd see, for example, in Hampstead.
No, no, I get it, and I understand it's a guiding, but my thought process is, as, as a property owner or someone wants to develop property, is meeting with staff. And hey, our property is in this rural agricultural area. What can we do? We'd like to do a Dollar General, or a store, you know, whatever.
Right.
Justin and his staff have to advise and guide-
Right.
-that applicant through the process, and ultimately provide a recommendation to this board. And so in my mind, like a tractor supply may be okay, or something that provides services for the, for the rural agricultural-
Right.
-characteristic, but does a dollar store serve that same purpose? It could maybe, but I'm not saying it doesn't, but that's why I was asking, is there something in mind for, exactly what is that use?
I think that, again, I think it's not highly prescriptive as it's written right now. I think it really is kind of opening up to smaller rural-scale character businesses. One of the approaches I think we took to this was being focused more on the character of different, you know, areas and the types of character that should be emphasized by new development, but, but being flexible to what the market wants to provide within those areas within reason. So, you know, I think that an individual rural-scale business could include potentially a convenience store or a gas station, you know, at a crossroads location. You know, I think that there's some flexibility, but again, the intention is this is, you're not going to be putting Home Depot in the rural areas of the county. It's really much more kind of small footprint services that are going to support residents that maybe don't want to drive 20 or 30 minutes, you know, across the county to, to, you know, access those services in other locations is the intent.
Okay.
And to expand on that, just like she was saying, it's, it could be your convenience stores. You want to think of businesses that will serve those residents in that area beyond, you know, a few miles. Things that people are willing to drive a few miles to get to, rather than driving 10 or 15 miles to Bergall, they can go to a corner store, or a small-scale, you know, hardware store, or a feed supply store, other sorts of things that are intended to provide those resources and services in those rural areas. So the intent with the rural agricultural district, which has been the case historically, is to really, it's a really a mixed-use district in that it supports commercial, but it supports commercial at a much lower density of a level, where it's typical and natural to see commercial businesses throughout the countryside in those, at those corner intersections, at those main roads that intersect. And that's just been the historical pattern here, and we want to preserve that while still supporting those businesses where appropriate, at those intersections, for example.
All right, thank you. The next one is, can you talk a little bit about incremental density versus middle, missing middle housing? So I know it's in the glossary, and it basically, it introduces some density that may be slightly increased than what the base density may. But trying to understand, is that meaning if I, if the developer chooses duplexes, triplex, townhomes, do they get an increased density, or just that the housing units are more clustered together, but the overall density doesn't change?
Good, good question. So the future land use categories provide the guidance with respect to the overall density that should be applied for a given project. So that is kind of the density. The incremental density is intended to, you know, kind of help support if you might be in an infill or redevelopment situation. It could even be just considering what, and I guess it is really kind of infill, considering the kind of adjacent neighborhoods that might be nearby, that might be less dense. The idea here is that, and this incremental density does relate to missing middle housing. So let me explain that first, because missing middle is kind of the larger concept.
Yeah, just both terms were used, and that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, yeah, so miss, if you think of it as a Venn diagram, missing middle housing is the big circle, and it essentially kind of is really focused on what we call kind of middle-income housing. That typically, over the last, you know, 20, 30 years, most housing developments were either single-family detached on individual lots, or it was apartment housing kind of in more commercial and heavily populated areas, in more intensive areas of community. And there are a lot of housing options in between those two types of housing. And so missing middle is kind of, it's an idea, a concept, that those different types of housing units that fall in between, which include small footprint, single-family detached housing, it can include townhomes, it can include duplexes or quadplexes that look like a single-family home but actually have multiple units in them, that those are appropriate if they maintain the character of kind of the given area. So the incremental density concept is more about, it's more focused, it's kind of the smaller circle in missing middle. And what it does is it really says, hey, look at the kind of context of where you're developing and what the development pattern and uses are there with respect to residential development. And if you are going to have a slightly higher density, given the guidance of the future land use map category that applies for that area, it's appropriate to have slightly higher density than you might see next door, but it still needs to be within a similar character of what that development looks like. So it's really kind of, some communities call it gentle density, there's different ways to call it. But the intention is, you're not, you know, making drastic changes. You're not building an apartment complex next to a single-family neighborhood, but you're allowing for some different types of units that, you know, young members of the workforce might be able to actually, you know, purchase their first home, or that sort of thing, or someone who's wanting to downsize, critical server, service people within the community might be able to afford those types of units and live, you know, within the county.
So if that, as an example, if that particular land use category says two units per acre, and someone wants to do townhomes or duplexes, triplexes, ultimately we're looking at two units per acre, not individual lots. That's the kind of, that's kind of what you're getting at.
Right, right. You have some flexibility for how you apply that. Yeah.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Just to add on, so going back to the policy change that's proposed on the package treatment, and with rural neighborhood, with these tripla, with potential incremental density within how the land use plan is written, it says that infrastructure to serve development is private well and septic systems. So if we're attaching it to that definition for this package plants, within the orange sections, those package plants would not be consistent with the land use plan as written. So it would only be the brown areas probably, that the residential neighborhood that would be able to, to utilize the treatment plants.
That's right. Any of the rural categories are really kind of not identified as growth areas. Those are kind of intended to be rural in nature, and, and so therefore, they would not be recommended for package plants to serve those developments.
So that minimizes the impact, because with that, there's the Falls Mist that's already in the proposed brown. And so there's really a small, as long as the land use plan and the definitions are strictly adhered to, but I'm still concerned because that opens it up to interpretation a little bit.
I have a couple of parking questions. And so the next one, I wanted to neighborhood center characteristics, page 37. Just let me know when you get there.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so I'm just looking at the parking criteria down at the bottom, and it says, non-residential multifamily parking should be located inside rear buildings, et cetera. But then as I look at the discouraged uses, and it lists establishments that require large surface parking areas in excess of 20,000 square feet. And maybe I can't do math very well, but typical space is nine foot by 18 feet. That's 162 square feet, add a drive aisle, just a one-car drive aisle, so that's another 12 square feet, or 12, so I'm looking at nine by 30, that's 270 square feet, I divide that by 20,000, I'm looking at about 70 parking spaces, 74 actually. So if I'm, one of these areas identified is where the food line is in Rocky Point, as an example.
Right.
Grocery stores typically have about 30,000 to 40,000 square foot in size, and I think our code requires probably one space for every 200 square feet, so now I'm looking at 200 spaces.
So we, first thing I'll say is, we don't typically recommend having square footage requirements specifically within the comprehensive plan. We typically encourage the ordinance to provide that, since this is a little bit atypical for us to have this in a comprehensive plan. This was a provision that was carried forward from Pender 2.0, that we were advised to maintain that within the discouraged uses. Obviously, you know, it's a purview of the board if you want to recommend that that be maintained or that that be removed.
Do you know the reason why it was recommended, carried over?
So, well, if I may-
Yeah, you probably know the history better than me.
Yeah, so as far as what this means for the plan, it's this, for the neighborhood mixed-use category, right? So that's what-
Neighborhood center.
That was what it was previously, right? So the new terminology for that district, which is a similar makeup, prohibited or called out that 20,000 square foot parking areas inappropriate, which would be your larger box retail stores, right?
Like a grocery store.
Like your grocery stores, your Targets, your Walmarts, those sorts of things. The intent with that particular area, the neighborhood center, was to support those smaller-scale, neighborhood-oriented businesses that provides a more walkable community, where folks can walk to the corner store, walk to restaurants, walk to different services, whereas the regional category, which is what supports those larger-scale box stores, and doesn't have that prohibition or discouragement of the 20,000 square foot parking lot.
Just, I'm sorry.
So.
I'm just looking where I see on the map.
Right, so based on the map-
Every major hub along the, along the bypass, as well as Rocky Point, which when we started this process, we wanted to try to keep heavier commercial and density around those hubs so that they can get on that bypass without being on local roads.
Right.
So I'm thinking, how many parking spaces does a hotel need? How many parking spaces does a, I don't know, emergency room need?
A hotel would be slightly less than one per, one per room. So if they have 100 rooms, you're looking, they're probably one 100 spaces, right out of them.
These are also areas that I think neighborhood, tell me if I'm wrong, Ron, would allow for apartments.
The neighborhood center would allow.
How many parking spaces do residential apartment complexes require?
So, just to say a couple of things, so if, you know, like we've talked about, this plan would translate into a new code or inform improvements to the code. The intention isn't to discourage a large-box store. The intention behind this is to kind of guide the character that we want to see, that, what those things look like, how they interact with the community. So the intention was never to prohibit a grocery store from being in Rocky Point. The intention was to kind of guide a certain type of development to create a more neighborhood-center-type or neighborhood-oriented district for those community-oriented businesses. So what we want to do is emphasize the, the character place types that we're encouraging here. We're not trying to discourage a grocery store in Rocky Point, we definitely want to see that, but we want to guide what those appear, what those projects appear like and how they interact with the community.
But I see a policy with establishments requiring large surface parking areas excess 20,000 square foot under discouraged use. That's where it is.
Right, so-
To me, so that may, that is but one policy versus, you know, the entire plan.
And I think, I think, you know, to Justin's point, the, the idea is that it's trying to encourage a different type of development than is kind of traditionally seen in a suburban shopping center.
Sure.
So I can think of a couple of examples, one in Knoxville, Tennessee, there's one in Chapel Hill, where you've got kind of even, you know, even like a Publix or a Target, where you can actually have, you know, a very tight kind of parking. They're essentially doing structured parking typically in that situation, which could potentially be supported here. I mean, it's not likely, but, you know, that could potentially be support. But the intention there is you probably have a shared parking situation, maybe with adjacent uses.
Yeah.
So that originally, you're trying, trying to create more of a walkable environment and reducing that kind of parking area.
I get and understand the vision, I'm trying to guide type of development Pender County wants, but I'm also trying to be practical.
Right.
And, and so it's like, you know, the parking policy says should be located, but then we have a discouraged use, and Knoxville is a pretty urban area.
Yep.
And Chapel Hill is a fairly urban area as well, but in North Carolina, urban.
Sure.
So that's, that's why I'm bringing the question up.
One other way to think about this, the particular focus here is to encourage those smaller businesses. Because one, seeing- stores, little stores like people used to see in these areas historically. So, that's another way to just kind of look at the intent.
I didn't know that labeled correctly on the map, then.
Yeah, I don't agree with that, because I think that those nodes of purple, those light purple, were specific areas where we wanted to see growth and density, because they were natural hubs on the interstates. And, so, if we want to see the growth to be around those, so we can preserve the character of the rest of the county, because here are the areas that we want to see the higher commercial growth, because there's easy access to the interstate and highways and byways, then that's restrictive, and I think would be restrictive to businesses that want to come here and say, we have an idea, and they say, well, we're not quite sure, because it's kind of discouraged use, because you're wanting too much parking. I'd be open-minded, Mr. Satterfield, if, you know, we can move on, but does everyone on this body understand that, or have concern, or would you like to think that Mr. Satterfield's concern is worth addressing as far as a recommendation and a memorandum?
I think it's worth addressing, because I, I see if we have a boutique hotel that has, on that Rocky Point, on I-40, if we have healthcare that is offered that to serve the eastern ti, or eastern side of the town, that's south of Burgaw, but, but serves, because it's right off of forty, but this would limit us, and from the start, I don't want the comprehensive land use plan to be used when, when it's convenient, and then throw it away when it's not convenient, oh, we like this hotel, or we like that this healthcare opportunity's coming here, so we're gonna, we're not gonna look at, and right now, from what Mr. Satterfield brought up, and as it's written, you know, if, if something like that came to this board, I would have to say it's inconsistent with the land use plan, and probably to be consistent with the way I feel about how development should be, should be consistent, so I wouldn't be able to be in support of that.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be one policy weighed against the entirety of all the other policies that may apply, but I, that, but that's why I'm bringing it up.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if, the way Mr. Brantley explained it, if that's what the intent of it is, I'm not so sure those areas identify correctly on the map, then.
So, are you recommending that that discouraged use, the first bullet point, be removed completely?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
But we, I mean, we can talk about-
Unless you put specific exceptions on, but then, does that work? Because then you're, then you're excluding other, other businesses, and you can't do-
Yeah, you don't know what's coming.
Yeah.
Mr. Brantley, will you take a note of that?
Absolutely.
We're gonna remove, page four, I'm not sure it's forty-five, it's forty-five in mine.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven yours, to remove bullet point one regarding the establishment requiring large surface parking in excess of twenty thousand square feet. You know, we're gonna come to a motion later, but is there any objection to that currently? Okay, so we'll, we'll include that if we move forward on this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Satterfield.
And this is probably similar, it's the next, under regional center characteristic, page thirty-nine, and I think the public version. It's looking at the parking down at the bottom, the second bullet, I noticed that the should-be is omitted, while it's on this one, while they are, it's included in pretty much every other one, where it reads, "Surface parking lots are located inside and rear of buildings and dispersed across the development." I applaud the, the new urbanist approach to that, but also trying to be practical. If this regional center is, as Mr. Brantley was talking about earlier, that's where we want our large, big, big-box type stores, just how feasible is a Home Depot going to put their parking to the side and the rear? On, or I think it would work fine, and it worked okay, like in an overall master plan, like if someone, you know, a hundred acres come in and one big development, but if it's a standalone forty-acre piece, or twenty-acre piece, or whatever Home Depot loads, would demand, I'm just not so sure that's practical in that, in that perspective. If they had to go through a rezoning, I understand if it's by right, it's by right, this policy wouldn't apply, but if they were going through a rezoning process, and again, I do applaud, applaud the effort and the thought process. I know Wilmington, you know, is more urban here, and there were areas and corridors on Seventeen Market Street, you know, so we want this type of development pulled to the street, parked at the side, or through the rear, but as we got further out, we knew the suburban nature of, of the development patterns had to apply. So, that, that's why I'm asking the question, or bringing the point up.
That's only applicable along Seventeen through Hampstead, right? There's only two-
The regional center characteristic.
Dark purple, there's only two, right?
And, and part of the, the intent with the regional center, one thing that we want to emphasize is the, you know, the transportation infrastructure. And so, we support sidewalks, multi-use paths, those sorts of transportation alternatives to get folks to these different businesses.
Sure.
Where it makes sense, where, it makes sense to have the businesses located closer to the road, where there's a sidewalk in the front, and then parking in the rear, so that they're more accessible to people using those alternative means of transportation, rather than having to ride a bicycle across a hundred thousand square foot parking lot to get to the building.
I get it.
So, that's kind of the, part of the intent behind that.
Right, but I'm just, that's kind of a blanket statement, and-
Right.
Just trying to, applicability side of it, because I've been in, in Mr. Brantley, George Garcia before, and trying to explain and to guide using these policies.
The, the request, or the, the draft basically says that for almost every single-
It does.
-community. And what you're saying is, since, you know, SB three eight-two has kind of put us in a bind here, because one of the ideas we had initially was being able to create like a district, where that, that you could apply these things to this district, and maybe you go to, you know, form base, with all different types of things you can do with that, we can't do that, right? It, it becomes too challenging, so now we're applying this county-wide, but we're using the, the future land use map to identify those areas.
I think into your point, and anywhere that this similar policy statement is written, the word should be is there, that happened to be omitted in this one, I don't know if there was a reason for that.
I don't think there was, honestly, I think this was a oversight, that those two words were not included in here, when, when I'm taking a look at it.
Should be is guided, you know, it's not, not a has-to.
Yeah, and the other thing that you could consider adding for these, just for the particular situations, if you want to kind of reduce the opportunity of being inconsistent, if you want to encourage, you know, a development that might be coming in that makes sense to be going in that area, but it's the parking that's the challenge based on this, is you could just add language that says where feasible. It's just really, it's, it's supposed to be kind of a, this is where we would like to see it, it's not a deal breaker, you know, it's not, the intention is not, if you can't achieve this, we wouldn't support the project. I don't think that's the intent.
I'm fine with something like where feasible, or such, or should be.
It certainly looks better, you know? We all agree that we would like to have, you know, buildings up on the road instead of parking lots, but it's not always feasible, and we don't want to discourage commercial growth either.
Right.
So, do we want to basically say if feasible along all those blanket statements regarding parking commercial areas in the districts?
Absolutely.
Is that what you're asking for, in your review of this? You, you fell on that one because of the, the omission, but do you think that that should, ask, language if feasible should be added to every single land use categorization that involves commercial use?
Well, I think, I think should be concerns, same, same, to me, should be, because this is not a, this is a policy, it's not a code, and so I think this should be, or where feasible adds flexibility and, and discretion, and, you know, staff working with an applicant on a development, the planning board, board of commissioners reviewing an application if it comes to our board.
Ms. King, what do you think? Do you think we need to add if feasible, or does make, should, from your perspective?
Um, I think that, I think adding where feasible provides a little bit more flexibility for interpretation of, you know, this is kind of given the nature of the type of development, because there's so many different types of development-
Right.
...that might be coming in under each of these.
Every piece of land is different.
Yeah, and so, there's some level of discretion that's inherently got to be used to interpret these, based on whatever project is coming before you, so I think where feasible makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Brantley, you got that?
Can we go back through that briefly?
Yes. So, I believe in the characteristics of each of the land use that have commercial, there is language that basically says that parking should be at the rear sides of the buildings, and that we want blanket across all those land use categories that state that regarding commercial uses to say where feasible at the end of that statement.
As it relates to parking orientation?
So, it looks like it's residential neighborhood, it would apply there.
I don't think it should apply to industrial.
Neighborhood center and regional center.
This is only for like commercial, not industrial, or-
Right.
But does that give an easy out for any developer, because, I mean, you can always, every plan is, you know, just like we get the clear-cut land, they, they could make, make changes to it, but it's not easy, so it's not feasible to them, and so, then that leaves it to the board and the board of commissioners on whether or not-
But it leaves it to staff, really, because most of these things are going to be, you know, by right through TRC process. Some of them will come before us, and we'll say, no, we want this.
Because we're, if you ask me what's feasible, if it's inconvenient to me, I'm gonna say it's not feasible.
But if it's by right, it's not necessarily tied to this plan anyway, we have to apply with the code.
The, the other way this could be utilized as well is if you do update your unified development ordinance, part of that, we would recommend that part of that assessment, look at what the future land use classifications recommend, and so, your parking standards might be changed for different types of uses, or within different districts, to reflect kind of the character that you're trying to accomplish within those areas. So, that could be some guidance here that, you know, gets a little bit more specific if you were to make those adjustments within your ordinance, because ultimately, that's gonna be what, you know, the holds at the end of the day, is what are the parking requirements in your, in your UDO?
And, and we do want to support and encourage those desired outcomes in term, in terms of the real goal behind this plan, but we definitely want to make sure we're maintaining that flexibility based on the project, based on the location, the design, those sorts of things. So, we want to encourage and incentivize these specific outcomes, but where feasible is absolutely appropriate.
But doesn't the should be take care of that, and where feasible kind of just add on for more flexibility, where it's almost a, a strong recommendation, but not really recommended?
Should be where feasible.
I just maybe just has, I think just need to be consistent on each one. The wording for all those, for that particular policy, where, whether should be, where feasible, I just think it needs to be consistent across the board.
Okay. We're about to make a recommendation, so.
I mean, I'm fine with should be across the board, but-
Okay.
And just for the brevity, Tom, I have like a couple-
Continue.
Maybe just one more, a couple where downzoning related, but I don't know that we needed to talk on that, but, so I'm gonna jump to page fifty-nine real quickly, and it's primarily, it's a question, policy three point one point A, primary corridors and nodes, reach to convert residentially zoned land to industrial or commercial in pri, in primary corridors. So, possibility, so basically saying, in on this corridor, or these corridors, let's consider rezoning residential properties to industrial properties, as I'm reading that. And-
Right.
It's potentially, Leanna, downzoning, by the way the state has defined it, even though most people would think rezoning from up, from residential to industrial is an upzoning in most people's minds, but the way that the state has defined it, if there's sewer uses allowed, that potentially could be a downzoning. So, my question, maybe you don't know, maybe, maybe Mr. Brantley can, maybe he doesn't know yet, is the intent for the county to proactively rezon this, or to be reactive and wait for an application to come through?
No, I don't think there was ever discussion in this process for the county to be in a position to proactively rezon properties. I think the intent of this policy statement is really to be explicit about the fact that this is a growth corridor, where sewers bidding put in, we're wanting to support these type of employment and commercial uses, and so, even, it kind of goes a step further than the future land use to say, we're oak, we support that change, because this is a place that we want to kind of maximize our infrastructure investment to support that type of development. At, at, as of, as a property owner decides to do that, not as a-
It's a point of emphasis.
Right, thanks for that clarification, just the wording to me was, I mean, the wording's fine, it just wasn't, it didn't, doesn't save whether it's proactive or reactive, and doesn't have to, I just want, that's just the purpose of the question.
I mean, we could add something like per property owner action, or something like that.
I don't think it's necessary, I don't think it's necessary, I just wanted for clarification for, for my own. And I probably have a couple other questions, I think that's enough for-
Are you sure?
Yeah.
This is it?
No, the only other one was, well, other major was action steps, you mentioned that in your slide presentation, and I understand, well, my review of it, there's other departments who are being, they're included as being responsible parties, and sometimes, they're, they are the responsible parties, and the planning department is not involved, and I just know the importance of buy-in from those other departments, and leadership from, from the county board of commissioners to the, the manager's office, et cetera, is key to that. So, I'm hopeful that they've been included, or at least aware of this plan, as they're, as they move forward with their own, like, recreation plan, or the, Mr. Brantley mentioned a water sewer plan, you know, that they see the responsibility and share that as the plan goes forward. I'm just asking that by, from, from experience.
Yep.
And I did confirm that, looking back at the, what we, the engagement process, we did engage with each of those departments specifically, and had them review the drafts of these sections that related to their department or field, from the health department to the county manager's office, utilities, everyone was very much involved with the draft review of those specific sections.
Thank you. That's well, I'll get it from there.
Are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Are there any other questions for Ms. King, or for Mr. Brantley about this draft? Since I'm not hearing any concerns, I'm assuming that we're all in favor of moving forward with this, and Mr. Brantley has one memorandum note, or we have two?
I have two noted.
Will you review those again for us?
So, the first one I have noted, we can workshop the second one a little bit, but the first one I have noted is to remove establishments requiring large surface parking in excess of twenty thousand square feet from the list of discouraged uses within the neighborhood center category.
Yes.
And then the second one I have, we can workshop this briefly, as, as it pertains to parking orientation and design standards, language should consistently state should-be?
Yeah, so there, I think there was only one omission, which was in the-
Under the regional center characteristics. That's the only one that I saw.
Because I, I think if you start adding where feasible and more, it makes it too loosey-goosey.
That's fine.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Should be is fine.
So, I can-
Yes.
So, I can specify that to include the language should be under parking design-
It, it was just missing from one section, which may have just been an error.
Yep.
Should be located.
And that was under regional center. Bear with me one moment.
Yes, sir. And thank you for taking those notes.
Is there any public comment for this hearing?
Oh, no, sir.
Any other comment? We have a, a couple items for a memorandum draft to be presented if we approve this, since I'm not hearing much concern, and Mr. Pitts, Mr. Jordan, I want to thank you for your time on the steering committee for this comprehensive plan. I know that they paid you a lot to do it. But, so, that being said, if we want to move forward, I'd like to give you to the honors of presenting this motion to approve, unless there's further conversation against it.
Do we have the correct, the consistency statement for the motions?
Just imagine better comprehensive land use plan.
I would like to, uh, let's see the wording, I would like to make a motion to approve and move forward with the Imagine Pender twenty fifty comprehensive land use plan with the updated wording.
The memorandum. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Brantley, are you good with that motion, the way it was read, that includes the memorandum?
I would prefer to revisit the previous discussion, if that's possible. I do appreciate the motion, second, oh, sorry.
I would like to revisit the second point that we discussed.
All right.
For some clarity, and I do apologize for that.
We have a conversation, we have a motion and a second, but go ahead and revisit that, let's make sure we get it right, I think we're all in agreement with what you're asking for.
Yes, sir, and I, again, I do apologize, but-
Let's clarify.
Looking at that, I'm seeing, so, as a discouraged use under regional center, it states establishes establishments requiring large surface-
Under, under the parking.
So, okay, let's just clarify that, and again, I just want to make sure we're on the same page, so that what's communicated to the commissioners is consistent with what the board's wishes are.
So, the second one is, that's what we're adding, should be?
Surface parking, okay, so, surface parking lots are loc, should be located to side and rear, understood?
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying, and I apologize for interrupting.
So, Mr. Jordan made a motion including the memorandum, can you read the memorandum so it's on the record?
Yes, sir, give me one moment. Yes, sir. Give me one moment. So under the, well, we'll start with the first one. So, under the neighborhood center characteristics section, remove establishments requiring large surface parking in excess of 20,000 square feet from the list of discouraged uses. And the second note mentioned, under the regional center characteristics, specifically the parking section, was to modify the language to state the following. Service parking lots should be located to side and rear of buildings and dispersed across the development and not clustered in one large lot.
Yes.
That is the motion and the memorandum, correct? You're happy with the motion memorandum now?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion with that memorandum and a second. Any further discussion? Call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brantley. Thank you, Ms. King and staff for your hard work.
Good job.
The steering committee members and the public for coming out to support this project.
Thank you, everyone. And we do have a couple steering committee members in the audience. Thank you guys as well for your support throughout this process.
Thank you, guys.
Now let's make the UDO consistent with it and zoning map. Okay, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there another presentation after this one?
Yes, we have public hearing 8.2, rezone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brantley.
Yeah, we need to load the second slideshow, which I think was just done. So I think we're good to proceed, Mr. Chair.
So we're not going to break for recess, but we'll just give you a second to do that then.
I think that has been done.
Okay, great. Go for it. Okay, so we have a public hearing 8.2 on the agenda. Rezone 2025-88. Rezoning requests to expand an existing dry stack boat storage facility as well as to allow for an office, retail space, boat sales, and boat service. Ms. Waters?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight to present on Rezone 2025-88. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use zoning map amendment to expand the current general business conditional District 1 to the adjacent parcels zoned residential performance. The purpose of the rezoning request is to expand the existing dry stack boat storage facility as well as to allow for an office, retail space, boat sales, and boat service facility. The site is located along Lewis Road, at the end of Lewis Road, along the intercoastal waterway and is surrounded by residential development and neighbors the state boat ramp. This is an aerial taken from 2024. We can see an existing dry stack structure and the site's location, again, along the intercoastal. And the state boat ramp is located near the bottom of the picture by the scale bar. I want to provide a quick update since the August 5th planning board meeting. Prior to that meeting, staff received complaints about new dry stack structures being placed on the property. We conducted a site visit and met with the applicant and confirmed unpermitted structures were on site. But since this meeting, the boats on the upper level of those structures have been removed. So what's in that red box is the dry stack structure that was approved back in 2017. And then those outside of that red box are the additional stacks that have been placed on site. And those are just follow-up pictures of those boats being removed on the second level. Here we are looking at the site plan the applicant submitted with this proposal. The applicant is proposing to increase the number of dry stack spaces and parking spaces from the original conditional zoning district approval. They are also providing designated trailer parking and maintaining the ship store. So there was a proposal in 2023 that had been denied. And so I just want to touch on the changes that had been made from that proposal. There's been a reduction in the number of dry stack spaces. In 2023, they were proposing 356 new spaces. Today, they are proposing 223 new spaces. There has also been an increase in parking spaces from 115 in 2023 to 131 in today's proposal. Additionally, the restaurant use has been removed to maintain the ship store. And the proposed northern dry stack will be three levels instead of four. To reiterate, the proposed uses as part of this proposal are a marina, office, boat sales, retail, and the dimensional standards are outlined in the table on the bottom. Buffers will be provided and located along Lewis Road, the existing boatyard, the intercoastal waterway, and Moore's Landing community. And these buffers will vary in intensity depending on the adjacent land use. Based on the trip generation projections, a traffic impact analysis is not required. There are a few environmental considerations for this site. The property contains special flood hazard areas and portions of the subject property contain wetlands and areas of environmental concern. The site also currently uses a private well and septic, which may require expansion. Uses in the surrounding area include a boatyard, the state boat ramp, and residences. And zoning in the surrounding areas mainly residential performance apart from the CZ 11 district to the north. The site is split by two categories on the future land use map. Commercial waterfront supports water-based recreational and retail uses. And although commercial uses are discouraged in the coastal residential category, recreational uses are encouraged. So I want to take a moment and kind of zoom out and just talk about the overall benefits of marinas that, excuse me, the overall benefits that marinas can have on a community. So first touching on the economic value they provide. They support local boating, hospitality, and retail businesses, which provides local tax revenue and creates jobs. They can also help attract tourists and visitors to the area. And proximity to a marina can increase property values, particularly if you are not directly, have that direct waterfront access. They also provide recreational and social benefits. They encourage recreational boating. They provide safe and convenient access to the water. They promote coastal heritage and community identity, and they create these really great community gathering spaces. To then kind of narrow down and look at dry stack boat storage, I want to briefly touch on some environmental benefits. This is not to say that dry stack structures can't impact the environment, but as opposed to traditional marinas, they can have less impacts on water quality because you don't have these protective coats on boats. They're not sitting in the water all of the time with their fuel. They reduce the need for extensive shoreline alteration to put in these larger docking facilities. And they can protect sensitive coastal and estuarine habitats because of that. They also provide an efficient use of limited waterfront land. Because these boats are being stored vertically rather than spread out across a large area, you can store more boats on a smaller footprint and again, reduce some damages to the sensitive habitats that are found in our waterways. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this proposal due to its consistency with the future land use map, existing uses, and the comprehensive land use plan. And to wrap up, I will touch on the conditions for this request and then talk about the current conditions for GBCD-1 and then turn to the proposed conditions with this request. All but one of the current conditions are proposed to be removed. And the proposed conditions with this request focus on pedestrian access, parking being retained on site, the designation of boat trailer parking, and conditions about lighting. Additional conditions pertain to signage for safety and the availability of trash receptacles for use by patrons of the marina. And this concludes staff presentation, and I am available for any questions the board might have.
This is the third time that this project's been before this board.
Yes, sir.
But you are recommending approval.
Yes, sir.
Of staff, because it's not, does not state that on the staff report. But you did the last two times, so, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for staff at the moment? Okay. I'm going ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Do you know the height of the dry stack? You said it's going from four to the three?
Yes, I have the site plan if. I believe it will be 32 feet in height, based on the site plan. But the applicant is also here who might be able to confirm that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or address the board?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington, and I represent the applicant in this matter. And we appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation. We have a series of slides and a number of photographs that I think will help explain the proposal and also the existing site and the conditions. With me here this evening are my clients, Jason and Logan Ruge. And our development team is here too, to help answer any questions that the board may have. It's Brad Schuler, land planner with Paramount Engineering. Our civil engineer, Tim Klink-Scales is here. And Greg Finch with Davy, who's our environmental CAMA permitting expert. And then we have our marina op, the manager of the marina, Brian Thurston, and Brian's wife Linda, who's the office manager of the marina here also, to help answer questions. So I know the board is familiar with the area. But this is Lewis Road. It's one of the very few waterfront commercial properties on the intercoastal in all of Pender County. You'll see in the slides to come that it's one of the very few areas that has a place type of waterfront commercial. And it's been used commercially for a number of years. The property that is before the board this evening for consideration is roughly this 6.8 acres. It is an existing marina. I know some of these points I'm saying are obvious, but I think that it bears repeating on some of the obvious points here, that it is an existing marina and boatyard. And it currently has 224 slips that were, permanent dry slips that were approved in 2017 by the Board of Commissioners, including the retail ship store. The 2017 approval was roughly 2.2 acres, covered by the area that's sort of crosshatched there in red. I'd like to point out that, please keep in mind that we're talking about essentially adding more slips here. However, we're doing that within a footprint that's nearly three times the size that's currently under the conditional zoning. So we're going from 2.2 acres of conditional zoning to 6.8 acres. And what that allows us to do, as we explain the plan, is make a much more efficient design, provide a lot more parking, and just have a better overall project, overall better project. So back to the property itself. It's also important to point out that the property shown here with the blue dot, the case in yachts property, was recently rezoned by the commissioners, commercial. And that's roughly 11.3 acres. The board, I'm sure, is familiar with that application. But our immediate adjacent neighbor to the, I guess, west is commercial and also has been commercial for a long time. It's my understanding that that consists of boat service, sales, office, some light boat construction. The areas shown with the orange dots, those are the state-owned state boat ramp. And please keep in mind that there's only two in Pender County. There's only one on the intercoastal waterway. I'll have a slide here to show that in a minute. But the idea of access to the, access to the water, public access to the water is a very important point in your planning policies. We have a slide coming up that will show you that that was one of the top priorities that the citizens listed as a need for the area. If we live in a beautiful area, I don't live in Pender County, I live in New Hanover County, but it's the same dilemma there. How do you get to our beautiful waterway? How do you access public trust waters? These are public waters that are for everyone in the state to enjoy. But it's very difficult to get to those waters. And I would respectfully contend that this is one of the few areas where you would, you have an existing marina, and this is exactly where you would want to provide more access to the public with the public boat ramp. Although this is a private facility, you're increasing the residents and visitors to this area's ability to get to the water. So I have some photos here just showing some different vantage points of the property. Point out a couple things. Since this was last before the board, we have redesigned the drop zone in the northern area of the project. I'll defer to Greg Finch, who did the CAMA permitting, to explain that. But what we essentially did was address the concerns of Mr. Melton, who was our neighbor to the north and east. I'd point out too, that all of the CAMA permitting has been obtained. And that's a, that's a huge component here. So all of the CAMA permitting for the water-dependent structures has been completed. And that's an extensive review process, so I think that's important to point out to the board. This photo and the photo that follows shows that if you look to the property to the north and the east, there's a natural buffer there. Not only is there a waterway buffer there, it's sort of a little canal section that separates us from the residential. But you'll see there's a pretty, pretty established vegetative buffer with trees and other vegetation that provides a natural boundary between the Sloop Point Marina and the residences to the north and east. And here's just another view of that. You can see the trees there. And this photo also illustrates nicely that when you look at this area, again, this is a, this is a commercial, some might say sort of a light industrial manufacturing type area when you look at that. This is not, the end of Lewis Road is not residential. This is looking toward the north and east. You'll see in the bottom part of the picture, a clear view of the state boat ramp. But as you look up and down the coast, you'll see that the water-dependent structures that are there are very much in line with what you see as you look up the coast with the sort of more residential and community boating facilities. So this is, this does not look at a place from water, the water-dependent structure side. It's another view. You can see the state boat ramp. That would be in the, the state boat ramp parking in the lower left-hand corner, the state boat ramp and the surrounding property. And here's just another, another view of that. And you also can see the expansiveness of the waterway. The intercoastal waterway is right there. So again, this is a, really a perfect place to have not only the boat ramp, but the marina. So as you look at Lewis Road from sort of the bird's eye view, you can see that, this photograph really shows a few things. You can see that, I would say, well over half of the northeastern part of Lewis Road is commercial. It's not residential. You can see that about 40% of the other, the lower half of Lewis Road is state boat ramp, not residential. It's recreational in nature, all utilizing the waterway. There are approximately 17 homes on Lewis Road. When we had two community meetings, we did two full public input meetings where we noticed everybody within 500 feet. Those were the meetings on April 10th and June 30th. We also met individually with the Lewis Road residents at the marina, and I thought that was a very productive meeting with the Lewis Road residents. Keep in mind also, as you look at, I'm going to come back to this slide. As you look at Lewis Road, Lewis Road does not connect with Twin Oaks Lane. It doesn't connect with the other roads. It's, it's, it's the only way to get to the water, to the marinas on Lewis Road. So we're not putting any traffic on Twin Oaks Drive. I think there was a gentleman that spoke at the last hearing and said he listed an address of Twin Oaks Drive. But, but please keep in mind that we're not putting traffic on these other roads. As far as the, the traffic that is put on Lewis Road, I would, I would like to point out too, that we're not putting boat, trailer. out too, that we're not putting boat trailering traffic on Lewis Road. If you're going to the marina, your boat is already there. The boat trailering traffic, or the boat trailering trips would be going to the public boat ramp. And there's limited parking there. We understand that. And I think there's been concerns raised by area residents about parking due to the limitations of parking at the state boat ramp. That's nothing we can control. But we're providing and will be required to provide all parking on-site. So we think it's a much more efficient use of the property and much more efficient use of parking. So this is really a pretty amazing photo. And I know I'll go through these photos quickly here. But this is a photo that my paralegal found. And when I looked at it, I couldn't believe it was nineteen ninety-eight. It looked like it was maybe fifty years ago. But you can see that really there was, all of the residential that I showed in the last photograph is, a lot of it is just not there. I don't see any houses on Lewis Road. I don't really see any, any, the development of Twin Oaks Drive. And it's, to me, it's, it's important to note that you can see in the photo that all of the commercial activity, the marina water-oriented activity was there. And that predates many of the houses in the area. This was an aerial, this is from the Pender County GIS showing the aerial subdivisions in 2024. This probably isn't all of them, but it's, it's showing the different, basically approvals. Many of these have been before the board. And you can see that if you do the overlay on the ninety-eight map, you can see all of that wasn't there. Or, I'm sorry, most of that was not there or wasn't built, even, you know, within clearly our lifetimes, thirty years ago. But the point I'm trying to make is that the population has grown significantly in Pender County. Again, another obvious point that this board knows better than anybody. And, but the, but the access to the water has not grown. And if you see, if you look at the county plans, and you look in the staff report, again, this is a much-needed item in the county, providing additional access to the citizens of the county. So for public boating access, I mentioned, in Pender County, there's two on the coast. One is, one in Topsail. Of course, Pender has inland water access. But if you're, you're talking about access to the, direct access to the intercoastal waterway, Pender County only has two for the entire coast of public boat ramps. New Hanover County, not that many more, but, you know, twice at four, Brunswick County at six, and Onslow at five. So just, you can see the demand. And I think when you hear concerns, or you've heard concerns about residents about the traffic and the usage of Lewis Road, understandably, a lot of that is the public boat ramp. Because there's only so many places you can go. And again, our population continues to grow. But as you consider this this evening, I hope that you consider the point that if you approve this, and we hope that you do, that you're going to be providing additional boating access. Of course, it's not public, it's to the paying public. But it is availability of access on the water to the many thousands of residents that don't have access to the water. The public boat ramp at Lewis Road has, I think, a total of, according to this, fifty-five trailer spaces, six accessible boat trailer spaces, and seven single spaces. So again, there is not much parking at that boat ramp. A lot of those spaces, understandably, are very large to accommodate the truck and the trailer. So we're providing significantly more parking at the marina. And if you are inclined to approve this tonight, you'll, we'll be adding parking. And I'll show that on the, on the next slide. We'll be adding to our parking. So I'd say two-thirds of the property is commercial waterfront. And this slide shows you that by my count, there's only five places on the entire intercoastal side of Pender County that has that designation. So there's only so many places you could do a marina. And it's, I would say it's probably fair to say, it's highly unlikely there's going to be commercial rezonings on, directly on the waterway in the near future. Staff had a great quote in the report and did a great job with the, with the report. But I wanted to note, it's at the bottom of page eleven. And staff noted that, and incidentally, before I forget, your, your professional planning staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. But staff noted that the proposal before you is consistent with your future land use plan, I'll quote, "because the proposed development supports Pender County's interest in developing strategically placed sites for tourism and water-based recreation in areas," I think this is the key part, "in areas that will not create conflicts with existing neighborhoods." I haven't inventoried the other four of these commercial waterfront areas. But if, my guess is that there's probably neighborhoods that are going to be impacted if you were to do a more intense development there. Or there just may not be the opportunity to do that there. And I would suggest to you that the, sort of the end of Lewis Road that we've described is really an ideal place to add additional boat slips. I won't read through all these, but I will note that we are meeting the desired uses category of your commercial waterfront by providing water-based recreational establishments. And again, I won't read through these because staff did a much more comprehensive job in their recommendation to you. But I would contend that we meet a number of the policies in your land use plan. And from your parks and recreation plan, clearly, the plan directs that the Parks and Recreation Department expand water access opportunities. Water access amenities were found to be a top priority for public meeting attendees. And the need for water access emerged as a key finding in the focus groups. The report also states that in a coastal county such as Pender, a higher quantity of water access amenities is more appropriate than the general standard. Just a few pictures of the marina. You can see the forklift to the, that's the current drop zone. You can see the forklift there to the right. The market itself is a, I think, a big benefit to the area. If you go to the boat ramp now, there is, and you forget your ice or your sunscreen or your drinks or your snacks, you don't have to go back up Lewis Road. You can go to this market. And I think that that is a benefit from a traffic standpoint, not only for the, the marina, but the public boat ramp. I don't think there's a, I think there's temporary restrooms at, at points at the public boat ramp, but there's not a bathroom facility. There is a bathroom facility here. I'm not gonna say it's a public restroom, but it's like most convenience stores. It's, it's available to the, to the customers of the store. And I think that that is significant to note. My client has done a great job with enhancements to the marina of, really tried to do a nice job. One thing we noted with the community meeting that we have with the Lewis Road residents is that they like to go down there and enjoy the water, sit by the water. And that's, that's great. My client encourages that. It's a, I think it's turned into a little bit of a sort of community gathering spot. And I think that's an important point. I believe the Sheriff Department and the Fire Department and CTO all keep boats at this marina. You can see the forklift drop there. And you can see the gathering area off to the right-hand side of the screen with the picnic tables and the grassy area. And my client wants to enhance this more with, with just adding to the marina. So with the proposed site plan, I'll cover a few points, then I'll turn it over to Brad Schuler, go through some details. Ms. Waters did a great job of showing the differences in these. But the original proposal that was denied was quite a bit more boat slips, less parking. We had a restaurant proposed and forced height levels on all the stacks. The current proposal before you, significantly less boat slips, more parking. We've eliminated the restaurant and we've reduced the size of the northern, the proposed northern stack. Here's a little comparison chart of the two. I think I covered all these points. But in a graph form, you can see three fifty-six versus two twenty-three. We've reduced the slips by a hundred and thirty-three. I think that's roughly thirty-seven percent or so. And then from the parking, not only have we reduced the slips, we've increased the parking. So this is significantly benefiting our parking ratios from one fifteen up to one thirty-one from the 2023 proposal to now, sixteen space increase. And then we've reduced the height of the northern stack. We've eliminated the restaurant off the current plan, which helped with parking and would also lessen traffic impacts. And then, as I mentioned before, I defer to Greg Finch. But we reworked the northern drop zone as a result of neighbor comments, concerns. And certainly don't speak for the neighbor tonight, but I understand that that's a more satisfactory resolution. So I will turn it over to Brad to walk through a few more of the planned details.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Brad Schuler. I'm a land planner with Paramount Engineering. And I just real quickly want to go over some of the key components on the, the site plan. As Matt mentioned, we are significantly increasing the amount of parking on the site. So highlighted on this slide is showing where the existing parking is for the existing marina. There are currently forty-two parking spaces. With this proposal, we are adding eighty-nine spaces and for a total of a hundred and thirty-one spaces on the, on the site. One of the benefits of the rezoning, it will allow us to move one of the existing drive stacks further north, as highlighted here. And again, the benefit of that is we're able to actually do the loading and unloading of those dry stacks away from existing parking areas and pedestrian areas. And it would also create some additional space for a new parking row that is close to the ship store. I also want to point out that the addition of the new drops zone at the northern portion of the site also helps direct the forklifts away from the areas used by pedestrians. So currently, the forklifts must travel to that existing drop zone next to the ship store. And so those forklifts are traveling right in front of the store. By moving or creating the new, larger drop zone to the north, we can direct the majority of those forklifts now to that drop zone and away from the areas used by pedestrians. And lastly, I just want to show that where we're proposing the dry stacks to be located will be in areas that have historically been used to store boats, as shown here on this slide. These are just a few renderings that our client had done, showing what the site would look like with the added dry stacks. With that, I'll turn it right back over to Matt. Thank you all.
I just had a few more slides, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and then we'll conclude. And I appreciate the, the board's time. My client's marina is part of the Clean Marina's NC. As Ms. Waters mentioned, there, I think there are environmental benefits to keeping your boat out of the water when possible. Here's some information. For the sake of time, I won't read through all these. But I think there is benefit to having the dry stack marina over the boats in the wet slips all the time. From the staff report, marinas provide substantial economic, recreational, and social benefits to the county and greater community. As Ms. Waters mentioned, that they can, could increase property values for those in proximity to the facility, being able to either walk to your boat slip or a short drive to get to your boat slip. Is certainly something that is appealing to a lot of people that, that live in this area. And then we talked about the environmental enhancements of the dry stack. But it's, again, it's providing, it's expanding the, the recreational boating for the county residents. So with that said, I'll, I'll conclude by saying it will, it will also increase the tax base. It's not gonna put any impact on the schools. This is not residential development. And it will, I think, provide an option that there's a, there's a great demand for. And there's a lot of residents that, residents that keep their boats now. There's a lot of residents that use the public boat ramp. This will provide us more opportunity to provide residents with options to enjoy the waterways of Pender County. So thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Or do we want to go right to public comment? We can always bring them back up. Thank you, sir. Public comment?
Yes, sir. First, we have Walt Taylor.
All right. As a reminder, I know it's been a while, speak directly into the microphone, name and address.
I'm Walt Taylor. I live in Hampstead. We've been at the marina for about three years now. And I can honestly say, if it wasn't for the marina, I'd probably be playing a lot more golf. Because that public dock is, for lack of a better term, horrendous for me. It's just so chaotic, so crazy. Yet, when you go to the marina, the efficiency, the quickness, the simplicity of being able to get in and out of the water is just amazing. They do a phenomenal job there. You know, we get back in the evenings and you look at the public dock and it's just, it's borderline chaos. There's trailers all up and down the road. And yet, you pull into the marine area, you're out of the boat, you're into your car, you sit at the picnic table, talk to your friends, and watch the chaos. And I just think, I'm, I'm very much in favor of seeing these improvements. I wish a lot more people at the marina that feel the same way we're here tonight, but a lot of them couldn't be here. And I just hope you guys allow that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have John Magrini. And I apologize if I have mispronounced your name.
Right, or name and address?
Hello. My name is John Magrini. I currently live at six four four Moore's Landing Road, which if you look at the site map, is on the north corner adjacent to the marina, which on the current slide, you can see my house on the southern corner there. I am also a certificate holder at the marina. So the outcomes of these meetings directly affect me more than most. Back in November of fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at a current planning meeting, one of the, a statement was made in regards to the marina. And let me read that. It says, "There is a potential need in this community." That was two years ago. So that still holds true today. "It's no surprise that the surrounding area is growing at a rapid pace. The land for a public marina is lacking in abundance." Somebody currently, previously said, oh, excuse me. "As a community, we need to preserve that space and grow with the demand and the need for it. In that need, it's currently a marina. So all we're asking is just to expand it for what it is. As I have a vested interest as both a neighboring resident and a certificate holder of that marina, as long as that natural wetland buffer remains, I support the expansion. I hope we can all enjoy it and let's work together to make it better for what we deserve." That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Allison Taylor?
Hello, Ms. Taylor.
Okay. Hi, I'm Allison Taylor, one fifty-six Lewis Road. I think I, I think I have a few corrections. He said there were seventeen homes on Lewis Road. There are actually twenty with the driveways that connect to Lewis Road. There's seventeen on the right side, there's three on the left. Boat traffic is less, yes. If you build a stack, you won't have the vehicles coming down with the boats. But how do these people get to their boats? They're still in vehicles and they're still driving down the road. They also have people. They also have people coming with them that are guests who will also be driving, who will need parking spots. So they have they taken that into consideration? He said that they have given 100 they have increased their parking spaces up to 131 parking spaces, and during the last meeting, it would equal 447 boat stacks places. They said in one meeting that they would, on average, use about 35% of that total during the day. 35% of that 447 is 154. So when you've got 154 people coming with their guests, how do you fit those into 131 parking spaces? So just a just a little something there. The let's see, we were I'm sorry, I have I have a tremor. Let's see, there when we met with Mr. Ruig and the lawyers and all that on the 23rd of June down at the marina, he had talked about a restaurant. Now, I hear that's not that's that's been canceled, but he also talked about a pool and a clubhouse being built in the grassy area right in front. And was nice enough to offer just only us on Lewis Road incentives to make all of this a little easier to tolerate. But, you know, if it's not going to happen and they do all this, what are we out? You know, what? So incentives for the people that live on Lewis Road.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Matt Payne. I live at 296 Lewis Road. First of all, chairman and board members, just thank you for allowing us here, allow us to have a word put in towards this. I am the third house up the hill from the boat ramp. When I moved in, there was a boatyard across the street from my house. I knew that when I moved in. There was a wildlife boat ramp at the end of my street. I knew that when I moved in. That's why I bought that house. I have four kayaks, a paddleboard, and two other larger boats. It is chaos on the weekend. I drive my ride my bike down to the boat ramp and I watch the chaos at the boat ramp. Sloop Point Marina isn't the only problem that's on Lewis Road. It's part of they they will bring an increase in traffic, but with the 55 spaces that are at the wildlife boat ramp, you can see in the picture there, there's also an overflow gravel parking lot that also fills up. And yes, on some holidays, people from the boat ramp are parked all the way up, and I've seen it almost almost all the way out to Sloop Point Loop Road. In fact, up by Allison Taylor's house, which she lives up towards the other end of the road, but I've seen them all the way up past her house before. It isn't just Sloop Point Marina. It isn't just the boat ramp. It's all of it combined, and all most of our concerns is the traffic that's on the road from the boat ramp, from Sloop Point Marina, from people that just drive down their car just to drive through the boat ramp, look at the water, and turn around and drive out because it is one of the few access points to the water for the public. So my whole concern is is just to take all of that into account, and I don't know that you all have any pull, but DOT should also be involved based on just the size of our road, the speed limit of our road, and for the amount of traffic. I know a traffic survey was done at one point, but it was done from Tuesday afternoon to a Wednesday afternoon, which I don't really know. If I'd have known it was a traffic survey, I'd have driven my van back and forth across it a whole bunch of times, but I thought they would leave it for a reasonable amount of time, like through a weekend. That way, you could see an average traveling up and down our road to know what our big concerns are. There's trash left, it blows out of boats. Again, not Sloop Point Marina's technically their first only problem. It's the boat ramp, it's people from their marina, it's people just driving down the road. It's everybody that drives up and down our road to look at everything. So the expansion and all that, that's capitalism. That's what made our country great, and that's what still makes our country one of the greatest countries in this world. But it just needs to be done in a controlled fashion, and that's what you all are for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, the last one, Danielle Coleman.
Hi, I'm Danielle Coleman. I'm Matt Payne's wife. I also live at 296 Lewis Road. I was here the last time when they were denied. We had a lot of community concerns, and I appreciate that everything was taken back, and a lot of our community concerns were addressed. So seeing that moving forward and seeing them make adjustments, very much appreciated. A few things that I definitely still want to note. I know when we talked back in June, when they invited us down, we had discussed the possibility of them putting in a digital speed limit sign. We feel that that's something that's been used in other communities to help remind people on the road to kind of slow down, and since they are encouraging more people at their location, that that would be something that we feel would be beneficial as the residents. I didn't see that listed, so I would love for that maybe to be reconsidered. I also want to just say that, yes, they have been at this, trying to make their business grow. I support that. I understand we moved here knowing, moved here very aware of what could happen on our street, and I just appreciate I appreciate all of that awareness. I appreciate that anytime we have questions, Linda's happy to answer. She's always letting us know how many boats were called out. It's good to see on busy holidays or just regular weekends what really the percentage of people and how many people are going out and how many people are there. We see the parking lots, they fill up quickly. More parking would definitely be beneficial, for sure. The safety, obviously, of the residents, being able to continue to take our dogs for walks, children for walks, and just being able to participate in our own neighborhood safely on that street is very important. So is the growth not just with the marina, but correct, like my husband said, in any area that's being developed on Lewis Road, we appreciate you guys considering the residents. I love that the sidewalks are going in. My very biggest concern is that all of these people that do have the boat trailers are still pulling up and parking on the side of the road. So are all these going to be damaged? Are all these sidewalks going to be far enough off that we're going to be able to use them? Is that something that we're considering? I don't know about the Eastmans, that's not my area of expertise, but anyway, I do support the growth. I do appreciate that they're responsive, and I do want to see a little bit more to support the community still.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that is all of the signups, Mr. Chairman.
A lot of different comments than the last two previous hearings on this property. More in favor and also more recognizing that they've made some accommodations, which is a positive sign of working with the community. That being said, does anyone have any comments or want to start this conversation?
I'll start. Is there any way to have no parking along Lewis Road to to discourage the, you know, the overflow from the public, the public boat ramp and, you know, parking in front of people's houses and so forth? I mean, it's that has to be, to me, that has to be more of a hazard than traffic itself. When you have if if my personal thought is if you had people with boat trailers or without boat trailers parked along the highway, maybe on one side or both sides, and then have traffic coming going back and forth, that's to me, that's got to be a much greater hazard than just just plain traffic coming in coming to and from the marina.
So to begin answering your question, so Lewis Road is a state-maintained road, so the county has no control or jurisdiction over what goes on within that right-of-way in terms of parking. We have had conversations with DOT within the past several months while we have been exploring the actual design of the sidewalk installation associated with the other conditional rezoning for the boat manufacturing business. So one of the things we did discuss was potential no parking signs. That's something we're continuing to explore, but it will be difficult for the county to control, you know, parking or regulate parking on the side of the road within the state right-of-way.
Is the sidewalk going to be in the right-of-way, or is it going to be on the applicant's property?
The sidewalk will be in the well, as far as the specifics of the other project, we are working through a design process where the sidewalk is going to be within the state right-of-way and constructed by the developer of the boat building business that came before y'all several months ago. I believe the way the conditions are worded with this, and we can let Brad with Paramount speak to this, but I think it was left open-ended as far as the design of that, whether it would be within their property or within the right-of-way, I believe was yet to be determined. If Mr. Schuler could speak to that.
Yeah, it's it's my understanding with with DOT, if you install any infrastructure within their right-of-way, they require what's called a tri-party agreement, meaning the developer would would build the right-of-way within DOT's right-of-way, and then typically DOT requires a local government to maintain that. As we were working on that condition, we did not get any confirmation from the county that they would be willing to maintain that portion of the sidewalk. So as it's shown right now in our plan, it's shown within the property boundary. However, we are open to working with the county if they wish to have that within the right-of-way and and maintain that infrastructure, and that's how the condition is written, that that provide that flexibility.
I'm just thinking out loud here, would it be possible, I guess, to put something in to discourage parking along that edge where people aren't just pulling their boats and or trailers and trucks up on the sidewalk? I know the DOT does not love elevated structures within the right-of-way, like bollards, but maybe you could do something on the backside of the sidewalk, whether it's you or the the other property owner. I guess it's constructing the.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be happy to work with with the county and with DOT on what some of those options are. I can't I can't think of any off the off the top of my head because I do agree that with with a public road, unless there's some type of local ordinance that says you can't have on-street parking, you're typically allowed to park on 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 public streets, provided you don't impede traffic.
I'm not sure what signs are going to do with that traffic. I mean, once somebody parks there, then the rest are going to say, well, I'm going to park there, too. And then there's no way to police it.
And one thing to clarify, so we did speak with DOT, again, regarding the design of the other sidewalk, but they have a rule, so they wouldn't allow a sidewalk to be placed within 10 feet of the edge of pavement for the road. So that would provide that would reduce the conflict between vehicles parking and damage to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask, is DOT still interested in having what they call that horizontal or vertical separation, either a distance or something like a curb or something, a ditch or something in between? That's that was my experience before, but but you kind of answered the question.
And as far as the infrastructure here, it's a there's like a really low swell. It's very flat along that right-of-way, so it would be separated by just like a grass barrier.
That wouldn't necessarily what's what's out there now wouldn't necessarily qualify what DOT likes to see on that vertical horizontal separation, so but but you answered the question. And I think if it's moved onto the property like you're like Brad, like your site plan shows, that does that becomes a non-issue.
And one thing to to mention, as far as the sidewalk installation on Lewis Road and supporting that, that was part of that was one of the recommendations from the bicycle and pedestrian plan that was adopted back in 2022. And so essentially, what we want to do over time, the idea is to build out that infrastructure to get people to Kiwanis Park, to other parks within the area on multi-use paths, sidewalks, and a variety of those sorts of alternative means. This is just a part of that, and if this this property owner is willing to help work towards that vision and install that, then we're getting closer to the implementation vision that that plan called for and recommended. One thing I will say, and I know there's a lot of different faces on the board, so just to take a look back at where this project has been, the planning board recommended approval on both times. The commissioners made a denial of the project, and then the second time, the applicant made a withdrawal. So one thing I want to emphasize is that staff has always supported this project, and historically, the the planning board has shown support generally. And I think it's clear that the applicant has demonstrated the willingness to work with the community, to work with the county, to continue to make this something that people can benefit from while mitigating and minimizing those negative impacts.
So, Mr. Bradley, there was no calculation on what the parking should be for dry stack compared to boats? Is there any kind of basis? Because I mean, every other use or every other commercial use, we have some kind of per per X, there's Y number of spaces, but we didn't see that for this.
We don't have that particular provision. Staff felt comfortable with what they were proposing, even with the initial application. I believe there was discussion, and Matt Nichols was part of that previously. I think they had referred to some code, made some comparisons to what they had in New Hanover County. I don't know if you can recall that, if it was one for every four spaces or.
Brad, where I'm going with this is just in in your narrative, you said, Matt, are around 60 reservations a day, which is 26% usage rate. One of the speakers talked about 35% being used before, which goes out to somewhere between 120 to 150, but all of those aren't going to just be using one vehicle. So then that does kind of on max usage days go over the parking that's going to be that's going to be available or provided. So that just where that calculation is and how we're looking at it as a board and as a county on whether or not we're doing it based off of max usage to make sure that we have 90 percentile parking, or are we okay with that overage? And I don't think the community members are okay with that. And one thing about the parking and on policing, I know in Carolina Beach, DOT does Spencer Farlow, and they were able to police that by they just towed, because I know that people that live down there, and it was it was not good, but they policed that and they cleaned up Spencer Farlow by by just towing, and then it was over.
So, yeah, I think on a maximum day, you're again, you're looking at 25% is 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 going to be around the the number. And again, this is on your July 4th weekend and everything. I will say that, you know, that that's some folks don't stay out for the entire day, so they they are coming back, and then that parking space becomes available. Some folks come out early in the morning to do fishing and things of that nature, and then they 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 come back. So that will allow for those spaces to to come available.
I was going to add, too. Yeah.
I think this this may be related. Appreciate the question very much. One thing I've learned in this is that it's a very efficient process. It's all on an app, so it's like making a reservation at a restaurant. So the marina can clearly control the number of users. If you if there's not a if there's not a space available, then there's no reason for you to go down there and try to get your boat in the water. So they can control the number of users over time and regulate that. Brian, the general manager, would do a much better job of explaining it than me, but it is there is a very much a process to it. So not everyone would not and not everyone would ever show up at the same time, but with the app, it it really regulates the the usage in a very efficient way.
And in the narrative at the station, you guys said four minutes, so that's 15 15 drops that you could potentially do a day. But with the new with if this was approved as as presented, would you have more than one drop zone and more than one forklift? So how many what would be the multiplier on that?
Yes, sir. And I may ask Brian, he's the he knows all about the operational characteristics of it. Brian, please.
My name is Brian Thurston. I live on Sloop Point Road, which is right next north of the marina. As far as control of traffic, we do have a maximum number of launches per day. When we run out of launches, we run out, so there is a cap on it that can be controlled by the app. There's a very good point Brad made on the uses model, that we see how many drops we get per day. We do have people that fish in the morning, they leave at 6:00, they're in by 9:00 and they're gone. That counts. Doesn't count as the whole day and they're there at once. Doesn't count as the whole day and they're there at once. We have a crew of people that come and go out and go to Lee Island during the day. We have another crew of people that come out and go out for dinner and go off and stay for sunsets. So, there's distinct rotations that go on throughout the day. So, it's not that all 60 people show up at 8:00 and stay till 3:00, and they're all there at once. It's scattered all over the place.
What was the other point that was?
How many, how many drops are you going to, how many forklifts will you guys be having if, when this is built down?
Currently, we have three forklifts. We have two drop zones. The new approval in the north side is for two more drop zones, so that will leave us with four.
Okay. So, you, you guys could potentially do what is that, 60? 60 in an hour at max if you guys were just turning and burning?
If we will do, if we could, if you divide the sites with the numbers we have now, we've got 224, we're proposing 223. You could look at it as half and half. We now have two on this side with 224. We're going to have 223 on this side with 224. So, it'll equivocally be the same. So, was there another?
Thank you.
I don't know.
Let me just hang out for a second there. Everybody's just doing math and.
The, the other thing I would add, because I think I failed to mention this in the presentation was that, but that's a great point that it's the efficiency of getting the boats out of the water, which is important at times with inclement weather and other things. So, it's getting the boat, boats out. Now, I'll just use me, me as an example of, I feel like I've been around boats a good part of my life, but I know nothing about boats. Okay? You don't want me driving a boat. However, I could go out, if I had the money, I could go out, or anyone could go out and buy a boat and go to the boat ramp, you know, put it on the back of my truck. I wouldn't have, no, the first thing of what I'm doing. There's no test to take. There's no, I mean, I, I would make a real mess of the boat ramp. I guess what I'm saying is, compare that to this facility. These are, this is professional dock folks that do this day in and day out all the time. It's a very efficient and, and very safe process. So, I, I did want to mention that, that it's efficient for putting the boats in the water and taking them out is equally important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the total parking spaces proposed in addition to the existing parking spaces?
Mr. Nichols, can you come back up and go to the, the presentation where you have the site plan and kind of explain parking for us again?
Yeah, Brad.
We'd just like to look at that diagram.
Yeah, I think it was 130.
131 total?
That was.
Total.
Was that the total, including the existing, or was that the proposed?
There's, how many more were proposed? How many, how many are currently approved? It's like, not that many.
Yeah, there's, there's 42 currently.
42 only, right now.
We'd be adding.
With how many slips?
224.
224. And there is possibly some overflow as suggested that go to the, the, the public boat ramp parking to accommodate that. But we have 42 now with 224 slips. You're requesting.
We're going to, we're going to add 89 more parking spaces for the 223 additional.
The 131 includes the 42?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 131 total.
And Chairman, in the, on the plat plan, it says it's one space per 4.38 dry stacks. So, there's 131 total spaces, 122 for customers and nine for employees.
Right. And I think that's, that's important to note that we actually have nine parking spaces specifically for employees, so they're not going to be taking up those customer parking spaces. And then, per the county regulations, we have to apply a parking standard to the other two buildings. So, the ship store has 10 parking spaces allocated to it, but I think we can all agree that the people using that store are also going to be folks using the marina. And then we have a, an office standard applied to the, the other building for 10 spaces as well.
So, 131 dedicated to customers.
When, well, 122 dedicated to customers.
222. And how many total, if this is approved, how many total slips?
447.
So, we've increased the ratio parking by how much?
The current, the current, it's one parking space per 7.2 dry stacks, and that's assuming not taking the, the parking that's counted for the the ship store. If you include the full 42 parking spaces, then it's one space per 5.3 dry stacks. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I'm complicating this. But the, the goal is, or the key is, is, is there's going to be more parking provided for the dry stacks overall.
I've personally worked in a marina and kept a boat at Bradley Creek. I think the ratio here is far better than Seapath or Bradley Creek. And four years of working at Seapath, I, I can't remember ever once having anybody parked on Causeway Drive. So, I think the parking sort of self-corrects even holiday weekends. There's a lot of folks that, I'm a boater. I don't go out on holiday weekends. I think there's a lot of folks that probably keep their boats at this facility that would shy away on holiday weekends. I think the parking that is proposed would be ample for what they're proposing dry slip wise. I do, I'll take a moment while I got the mic on. Got some notes here. Obviously, I was in favor of this project in 2023 and really have no reason to be not in favor of it this evening. I'm a little saddened by the reduction in slips. I think that this would be a huge asset to Pender County to have the additional slips that have been taken off the table as well as a restaurant. I don't know why a restaurant in this location would be more egregious than the restaurant that's on Scottsdale Loop Road. I, I think it would be a benefit to the folks that live nearby, but that's not on the table. Taking a boatyard that's currently a boatyard and keeping it a boatyard, dry stacks, you know, obviously changing from what it was formerly with Lewis Brothers to the dry stacks is definitely a cleaner situation in my opinion. The boat repairs that were being made onsite at Lewis Brothers were typically pretty dirty in nature, bottom paint and such. I just, I think it's a good opportunity and, and it's a good use of, of this area on the coast, and for that reason, I very much support it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jordan, any comment?
The two previous times, I have been against it, but mainly, mainly because of neighbor input. And tonight, you've, you've, the people that have came, they seem to, the neighbors, they, the the people that have spoken have have their support, so you have my support.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Keeler, do you have any comment? Concern, things that need to be addressed?
No, I don't believe so, not at this time.
Mr. Satterfield?
No, sir.
Most of the concern, thank you, mostly the concern really is about, is about traffic and about parking and parking up the street, and there's nothing that ticks me off more than someone flying by my house where my kids play. So, I understand the frustration of people driving down the road and flying up there. Now, I don't know if we can actually require a digital sign to put on DOT road for, for, for speed limits.
So, that's something I have been thinking about. I would like to hear from an applicant representative. I think we can't make DOT do anything or approve anything that goes on in their right of way, but I would like to see if the applicant would be interested in exploring that with DOT to see if they could perhaps fund the installation of a digital speed limit sign that could help curb that, you know, excessive speeding on Lewis Road.
You guys have really, I think, done, to try to get your project, you know, accomplished, have worked well with this community, it seems. There's been a lot less people here against it, and several of them have come up and said that you have actually done this. So, what are your thoughts on ways for you to help the community with their, their biggest concern, which is traffic and speeding?
Yeah, we've already reached out to DOT regarding doing that sign to get their preliminary understanding of what the requirements are, if this type of sign would even be allowed, and according to DOT, it would be allowed. It would be at our cost.
Is that something you're willing to do?
Yes, sir.
Is that a condition that we currently have?
It is not a condition.
Do you have a proposed condition that you would like to, for us to discuss?
Would it be one sign pointing in one direction, or would it be a sign on either side of the road, so people coming and people going? And I hate to throw that out there.
I know, I know. Like, what's worse?
But in old point, that's what they did. There's, there's one sign leaving the neighborhood and one sign coming in, and it does remind folks.
There's nothing better that slows you down.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. We're more than happy to do that. As Brad mentioned, I know Brad reached out to, to DOT, and at the developers, my clients, it cost an expense would pay for the installation of that, however the county and the DOT allowed. It could be both ways, wherever we're allowed to put that, but it could be one or two signs.
I think the wish of the community and us would be for both ways, right?
Absolutely.
So, what type of language would you feel comfortable with proposing for us to consider for a condition?
Just sort of standing, standing here at the podium, I would say the applicant shall install at the applicant's expense, digital, two digital speed limit signs as permitted by NC DOT and approved by county planning.
Now, are these signs going to show the speed limit, or are they going to track how fast you're going and say that you're going over the speed limit?
Typically, they'll do both.
I think that the key is it, it shows the speed of the, the traveling vehicle.
Okay. So, Justin, are you working on wordsmithing over there? Thank you. We're going to work on this. So, it sounds to me like this was, at least to me, like the last piece of the puzzle here, from what you guys can actually do to try to help the community with this traffic. Because I do believe most of the concerns are really coming from this public boat ramp and the general public showing up from all, from wherever to utilize it, whether they're neighbors or somewhere else to take advantage of this area.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
So, I wish, Mr. Nichols, if you could return to the podium, I just want to briefly workshop this. So, the applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed limit monitoring signs within the state right of way as acceptable or permissible by DOT, NC DOT?
And, and county planning.
And county planning, okay.
You okay with that? I know inside the, inside the right of way, if DOT says no, would that eliminate that condition? Or do we know for sure that DOT can do that, or can they do it on their own property?
And maintain. We, we would maintain that, with that language in there, yeah.
Sorry, hold on.
Benefit to the project?
I believe the ones in the neighborhood are within the DOT right of way.
Okay.
I think it's a, I think, I can't speak for DOT, but if, if I could, well, let me just put it this way. So, I would think that that would be an enhanced safety measure within the state right of way that if it's not at the expense of DOT, I would hope it would be something that they would be in support of to help limit those traffic incidents within their right of way.
Okay. So, read us back when you have a second, when you're ready. The condition that you're proposing be added to this.
The applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed limit monitoring signs within the state right of way as deemed acceptable by NC DOT and Pender County. And then there was something about maintenance and maintained, and maintained by the and maintained by the applicant. And that's something I'm curious about.
Does it need to be applicant or maybe owner? Does it matter? I mean, this runs.
Do we need to put Lewis Road on that?
I would be the owner.
I mean, I'm curious to see if DOT would be willing to maintain the sign, the signage, if the applicant were to take on the expense of installing it.
Per, or per our correspondence with DOT, they would want the sign to be installed and maintained by the requesting party, typically an HOA or Property Owners Association.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. So, let's get that condition right.
Okay. So, let me read it back. The applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed limit monitoring signs within the state right of way as deemed acceptable by NC DOT and Pender County and, and be maintained by the applicant.
Do we need to be more specific about where they go, or?
And also what they show? Do we have to say, be specific that they show both the speed limit and the, and the speed of the vehicle?
So, I did clarify, within the state right of way on Lewis Road, to clarify that, on.
Either side of the street.
On both sides of Lewis Road.
To show the speed limit and the overage or whatever?
To show the travelers, how about this, to show the traveler's speed limit as well as the posted speed limit. Does that, is that acceptable? So, let me read that back.
Yes.
I think this is it. The applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed limit monitoring signs within the state right of way on both sides of Lewis Road to show the traveler's speed limit as well as the posted speed limit as deemed acceptable by NC DOT and Pender County and be maintained by the applicant.
Now, now, can we give staff some flexibility, if you guys run into a headache about moving it here or there, as long as the intention is, you know, do you need that?
I think.
These are maintained by solar? How do you power these things?
I think with the term, the language by, as acceptable by DOT, DOT, I think, will provide essential input on the most, the positions that make the most sense with, because we don't want it at the very beginning, at the very end. You want it to be kind of more in the middle.
Excuse me, sorry to keep talking about this. If I could make one suggestion, I would leave the actual design and location to DOT that will be handled during the permitting process. I think if it just says it's a speed radar sign.
Yeah, speed radar sign.
At that, and then, because there's specific standards we have to meet in order to get DOT's approval to, to put that sign there right away.
Sure. And that's, thank you, because that's what we're trying to do, is find the right language that makes it not a headache for you.
Right.
While you're trying to do the right thing.
So, this, I think the understanding is, in order to get the approval to put it in DOT's right of way, we have to meet their standards, so they're going to have some, some set standards that that meet the intention of informing folks what their speed is.
Because it looks like you would want to have it around 132 or 156 going down towards the boat launch, but there could be other factors, and then going away, you would probably want it right around where the second or third house is, so that people can pick up speed and get slowed down before they get in front of most of that. But we, I don't think we want to put any of those conditions.
So, one more time, Mr. Brantley, read it back to us.
So, before I read the whole thing, I have as deemed acceptable by DOT, I believe that covers their design input, their design preferences. The applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed radar signs within the state right of way on both sides of Lewis Road to show the traveler's speed as well as the posted speed limit as deemed acceptable by NC DOT and Pender County and be maintained by the applicant.
Mr. Schuler, are you acceptable to that? You gave a little bit different language there about the specifics of the sign.
If I would just remove the specifics of the sign and say it's to install two speed radar signs, and then.
Radar, radar kind of covers it, what we're doing here, and that's the whole point.
I just, I don't want there to be any conflicting language with, with DOT's standards.
Yes, okay.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'm going to.
And in both directions, not both sides.
Okay. That, that was my understanding. It would be both directions, but not necessarily both sides, so not four signs.
We'll try this one more time. The applicant shall install at the applicant's expense two digital speed radar signs within the state right of way in both directions on Lewis Road as deemed acceptable by NC DOT and Pender County and be maintained by the applicant.
Okay. We're going to add that condition. I think that addresses a real crux of the issue here. It may not solve the issue, but certainly you're being a good neighbor to try to help the community with this problem. Any other, you guys all have spoken your piece here. I'm, I'm in agreement to support, I've supported in the past. I, I also do think it's a responsibility of, you know, it's not always popular, but to try to provide recreational opportunities for the public, and as we are growing, whether we like it or not, we still need to make sure we provide opportunities for the residents of our community. So, I'm in favor of this. That being said, is there any more conversation or concern or questions for any staff or for the applicant?
Can we go back one slide for a moment?
Yep.
Give me one more moment, Mr. Chair. Okay, yeah. So, it would be all of the conditions before you with the addition of the one that we just discussed.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the zoning map amendment. I'm sorry.
It's up there.
Yeah, I got it, alright. Motion to approve the zoning map amendment and make finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies, goals, in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan Goal 3.1, Policy 3.1. A, 4.2. I, 4.3, 4.4, 4.4H, 5.1. D, 5.1. K, 5.1. M. Proposed re- rezoning is consistent with the commercial waterfront and coastal residential future land use classifications in Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan along with the.
Back a slide.
Proposed conditions of approval numbered one through seven and the additional proposed condition as outlined by Mr. Brantley.
I second that motion.
Okay. If I'm not hearing any more concern, voice it now. Call for a vote, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Uh, the case passes the planning board unanimously. Uh, this will be going to the county commissioners. Remember, we are an advisory board. The commissioners will make the final say on any rezoning case. And that meeting will be when, Mr. Brantley?
The next Board of Commissioners meeting that would have this hearing would be October 20th.
October 20th, and that will be in Burgal, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And we will send notices out as well as post sign and publish ads within the newspaper.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll give a second. Yeah, sure, sorry, I was, my mic was off. Yeah, we're having trouble there for a second. What do you need? Oh, sorry. Okay, Mr. Brantley, we're going to move on to, uh, public hearing eight point three. Res zoning requested change of a use in existing commercial building that is approximately 3,500 square feet for the purpose of operating a business that cuts and polishes granite for countertop installation.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And so what we have before you is another conditional rezoning proposal. This property is located on US Highway 421, north of the intersection of Shiloh Road and south of the intersection of Tetter Road. You can see a vicinity map before you on the screen showing the subject property not far from Devane Drive and, and Robert Lee Drive, a small neighborhood in the rear. So the applicant is Jamie Oliver Lopez and the owner is JDS Tire Systems Incorporated. And so the subject property, there's an existing commercial building that's around 3,500 square feet in size. This building has been there for a number of years, um, the past, you know, 30 years or so on the property, operating commercially. We'll talk a little bit about the history of this property. And so another thing to point out, the subject property is zoned RA, rural agricultural, as is the majority of this part of the county. And so you can see a detailed site plan before you. Again, the building's approximately 3,500 square feet. They're proposing an outdoor storage area in the front of the building that will be completely screened from view from travelers on US Highway 421. There's some, you know, a few employee parking spaces and the total site area is around two acres. You can see a detailed version of the proposed stockyard and privacy fence on the right-hand side. And so what they're proposing is a, essentially two, two uses. So the first is a, a use that cuts stone and essentially finishes stone products for installation of marble countertops for kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. The second part of this use is the specialty trade contractor use, which would be the actual installation, going to homes, going to businesses and installing these countertops. So that would be twofold. So neither of these uses are permitted in the RA zoning district. And so hence the proposal for the, um, conditional rezoning of this property to allow this use. They're not proposing any setbacks or dimensional standards that are any different from the existing zoning district. You have the typical RA designations before you. They are not proposing anything otherwise. The buffer, the, this is your consistent with what the ordinance would require for any commercial property next to residential property. It will be an A buffer along the road frontage with some modest landscaping and then a full screen through a hedge or a fence around the perimeter of the site adjacent to those residential uses. Very modest, um, traffic impact. We have limited information on this section. I know the board is used to seeing those capacities, but outside of the NPO boundary, the, that data is not available. So the countertop business is going to generate around 30 trips per day, right? That's going to be based on the, the trip manual for the traffic impacts used by traffic engineers nationwide. We did pull some numbers for traffic on 421. It's experiencing, as of two years ago, it's been experiencing around 4,500 trips per day, which is a stark contrast to what we see in, in the Hampstead area. So clearly, there's a lot, a lot of room to grow on 421 in terms of traffic. They had a public meeting on June 14th, 2025. No one was in attendance. The future land use category is rural agriculture, which does, um, you know, support the county's historical agricultural heritage. It does allow limited commercial uses in those areas. And so again, this district is intended to accommodate non-residential uses and low-density residential patterns. So there's some policies before you that support this project, compatible development. The county supports new commercial developments that blend with surrounding neighborhoods and limit traffic noise and light impacts. So with the screening and with the use of this existing commercial building, they were going to mitigate, they're going to make improvements to the property that mitigate those impacts to the neighbors. Commercial development, again, the county supports a wide range of commercial development. And then the county supports, um, limited non-residential uses in rural areas. So historically, this, this property was used, um, there was a special use permit approved for this property about 20, 25 years ago that allowed for a variety of, of different commercial uses. The intent back then was to do basically a small-scale business park with a lot of different light industrial, heavy commercial uses. They didn't quite fulfill that vision completely, um, this, and so now they're wishing to go in a different direction with the site. Specialty trade contractor in the cut stone manufacturing was never a part of that specialty use permit, so they weren't able to pursue this under that previous approval. And so staff is recommending approval of the proposed conditional rezoning. It's consistent with the current use of the property and the historical use of the property, being that there's been a business here for many, many years. And staff finds that the proposed use is consistent with those policies previously mentioned and the limited commercial allocations in rural areas. There's a modest traffic impact. And one thing I want to point out with the UDO, one of the intent statements and purposes of the UDO is that the, the county needs to promote the rehabilitation and reuse of older buildings. So what better way to use this property than to allow new business to come to the property and invest in this building, invest in the space and invest in Pender County? And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brantley at this time? Are there any public signups?
There was no sign up for this.
Okay.
I can go back to the site plan for reference.
What was, uh, uh, what were the allowed uses under the specialty use permit?
It was been, it's been used as a parts, I believe a parts dealer. Car kits. So it was a car kit business. And the, the special use permit is in the packet. Miss, Miss Foster here has a copy of that. Let's see.
I don't know, there's a whole lot of discussion on this one.
So just briefly, I have a copy of the specialty use permit, which was actually a part of the board's packet. So just to give you an overview of some of those uses, um, veterinarians, electrical repair shop, motor freight, terminals and warehousing, storage of merchandise, um, let's see, con, you know, all contractors, appliance repair, farm implement sales, garden supply stores, automobile, truck and small machinery repair, to name a few. But generally, those categories, light industrial. But one thing that was never allowed was the, the finishing of those marble countertops.
Okay, so my only concern is that this is basically becomes a, a, a yard, a stone yard. And they're going to be using high, uh, noisy equipment to cut the stone. And so the specialty use permit supports it because I think like, hey, this has been used and we're evolving here and there's a use. The fact that it's on 421, you know, it's a major corridor, so it's right on a major highway. But that's my only real concern is, is, is the amount of dust that's created in this? Is the fabrication going to be only inside? Are they going to be using it outside? It's a lot of water. You know, so that's kind of, I may be all, uh, by myself on this one, but that was kind of my only thought for discussion is the impact of that, uh, use.
I don't know that it would create any more noise than, you know, machinery repair. Most of the time, cutting stone, uh, at least the folks that we've used, it's, it's all done in a wet process, so it minimizes the dust.
Yeah, and it's contained. My, my father had precast concrete and then also did, uh, stones, they did gravestones that were granite and things like that, as well as countertops and things. It was all contained on what they did to polish and to, uh, cut.
And keep in mind that with, with the full screen, that will mitigate some of those external sounds as well.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing I want to mention, um, and this was done intentionally by staff, but it was, as far as the use categories, we usually do the six digits when it's so specific, but in this case, we did NIXCO 238, specialty trade contractor. So if 10 years from now, for some reason, they want to transition to a different type of business within that specialty trade contractor business, let's say an HVAC company wants to come in there, this zoning would still support that.
And that's probably smart for flexibility.
And they wouldn't have to come back for another approval every time there's a slightly different business.
Okay. Any common objection or support or?
I support it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think the noise would be that significant, um, 421, a lot of truck traffic going through there. It's pretty noisy the way it is. Um, and it's north of Shiloh Church, so you, she, they're getting way out in the sticks anyway, so.
Okay.
Not that that matters, but, uh, I do, I do support it and I would be in favor of it.
Support. I think it's a big enough property. I think it's low impact. I think it's compatible with, um, what it's always been, so.
I would agree.
Okay, Mr. Jordan, will you, uh, to give us the honors of making this motion?
And one moment, Mr. Jordan, so before you have two conditions, these are as bare minimum as they get. They're, these, the applicant's not proposing significant changes or improvements to the site. So we've kept it with compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance and meeting all local, state and federal regulations.
I'll make a motion to approve, motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies and goals in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Policy 5.1. E, 5.1. K, Policy 5.1. F, F. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the rural agriculture, future land use classification in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And the proposal is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goals of the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Will you add the two conditions for us?
You can just say the conditions.
Okay. Conditions to consider in approving the conditional rezoning for the site. The project shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. Condition number two, the applicant shall meet all local, state and federal rec, regulations.
Thank you. Motion of a second?
Second.
Okay. Since I have heard mostly support, call vote, all in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. As I stated previously, we are an advisory board, so the final decision does rest in the county commissioners and which will be in Burgal on October. 20th, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Well, okay. That concludes our public hearing, and I think this is the first time in a while we've had unanimous approval on every case, uh, that we've had. So discussion, Mr. Brantley, do we have any discussion you'd like to share with us?
Yes, sir, there's some, a few announcements to make. Um, the first one, I, I regret to inform the board that Margaret Moska has resigned effective immediately. Her son is doing a traveling hockey league, which sounds like a pretty exciting opportunity for their family. She enjoyed serving with everyone here and, yeah.
She was a great asset, uh, very technical mind, and I do appreciate her service and respect her decision. So, thank you, Ms. Moska.
So we've lost one, we've lost many, right, over the past several months. But we've gained two, and so I want to introduce in order in which they've joined us, Madeline Spencer, a new current planner with Pender County.
Thank you for joining us.
That was a segue. Hi, I'm Madeline. I just graduated Appalachian State University. I'm actually from this area. I was born and raised in Willard, North Carolina, so near Pender Lee. Um, and I'm very excited to give back to my community and, um, yeah, I'm very thankful to be here tonight and you guys did great. So thank you guys for your service.
Well, we're very grateful that you're part of the team.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
And then next, I want to introduce Virginia Norris, um, the new senior planner, Long Range.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you all?
Doing great.
Well, I'm really excited to be here at Pender County. I've been at New Hanover County and before that was down in Ori County, at City of Myrtle Beach, so I'm really pleased to be here, um, and very excited to be joining this team.
Thank you very much. Change of pace for you. Anything else, Mr. Brantley?
I have nothing else to add. I did want to say thank you all for your support with the comprehensive plan.
Of course, thank you for your time and effort working on it. It's important to get it right. Next meeting date, uh, Mr. Brantley's informed me that this, uh, auditorium will be unavailable for the rest of the year.
That is correct.
So we are defaulted to Burgal. I thought you liked that, you know, like. Uh, Mr. Brantley's informed me that currently there are no cases on the, on the docket, so, uh, but that depends on the TRC process, and if something gets through, then we will have hearings. But if we don't, then we don't. Uh, we may not have a need to, to meet if that doesn't happen, but hopefully those TRC processes are, are, are successful.
Yeah, I will let the board know as soon as I can, certainly well before I would typically publish the packet.
Now, now the question I have is, we meet here in Hampstead at seven, primarily because the traffic is so congested that we want to allow time for people to get home from work and get here. Do we want to meet at seven in Burgal or do we want to change that to six?
I'm good with six, if, if that works with staff.
Is it more convenient for staff, uh, to do it at six?
It's, it's not about staff. We're here to serve, however, whatever capacity we can.
I, I think we should do six o'clock because we've done it in the past, but we found that this part of Pender County is, is, has difficulty getting here.
Burgal would be alright at six, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent sure of that.
Do I need a motion for that then, Justin?
Does the board wish to make that, the, the case for the remainder of the year or try the next meeting and see how that goes or?
Let's just do it for the remainder of the year, and if we find that it's a problem, problem where people are showing up and they're getting to go sign in, we'll make. problem where people are showing up and they're going to go sign in, we'll make that adjustment and then say, okay, we need to do something different. But we've never had an issue at 6 o'clock in Burgal with people showing up.
Even with folks coming from here to there?
I don't think we've had a problem with that.
That's the only drawback I can see if we go to 6:00, is anybody coming from here? Like yesterday was gridlocked for hours.
Yeah, but once you get, once you get off this road, you're fine.
Yeah, but I had a friend coming from Surf City area, it took him.
What, what cases?
An hour and a half to get through this 17 yesterday.
What, what cases are potentially, are they Hampstead cases?
One thing that may come in, in October would be Piver, the Piver tract. Some of you may have heard of that. It's off of Country Club Drive. It's one of the probably most pristine undeveloped pieces in that part of the county. That's up for plan development, master plan review.
A master plan review.
They are in the process of finalizing their TIA.
So this is a administrative review then?
By the planning board, yes, sir. And so they're waiting on the TIA to be finalized. DOT was beginning that last stretch of review today. And so they hope for the October, early October meeting, but I'm not very optimistic about ma- making that.
I, I said we'd go with 6:00. I'll take, entertain a motion on that.
Would we be able, even if we started at 6:00? I think that Piver one, there's going to be a lot of folks coming and signing up. If somebody was unable to get there by 6:00, could we extend the sign-in time a little bit?
Yeah, I think we just, someone like I did tonight, if you showed up late.
I just want to be mindful of that.
Yeah.
If we move it to 6:00 and.
We have been very accommodating to individuals and the public to show up to make sure they get an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, always, yeah.
But just to be clear, we do provide notice, mailed notice well in advance of the meeting. We publish ads, we post signs, so people would be aware of the change well in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
Well, even, just, just, just as a general rule of thumb, if it starts at 6:00, I don't still want to be there at 11:00 o'clock. I'm just saying.
Well, someone's 10:00 now.
I know that, but I'm just, if, if. If, if possible, and we know this is in the pipeline coming, is there any way that we could just have that is, is only doing that one item on the agenda? I know you can't do that.
It's hard to, it's hard to say or answer that question. It's a hypothetical.
Okay, well, I just, I just threw it out there for, you know, something, something, for something to think about.
We may, we are expecting some potential rezoning applications, but they wouldn't come before you for maybe December or January.
I'll entertain a motion for the Burgal at 6:00 PM on the first Tuesday of October.
I'll make a motion to have the next meeting, the first Tuesday in Burgal at 6:00 PM for the remainder of the year, if we don't have a meeting in October as well.
Thank you, and a second? A little second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, since there's nothing else, Mr. Brantley, you got anything else?
One thing, just to clarify, the November 5th is a Wednesday because of election, Election Day, just to clarify that. But I think that's, I just wanted to clarify that for the group. I think the motion covered the.
Okay.
The, the 6:00 PM part.
Well, I just want to thank staff for being here so late tonight and the audience for showing up and for the Sheriff's Department for lending this kind gentleman deputy to be with us tonight. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Who was the second?
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I second. The motion to adjourn?
Alright, it is adjourned.
Thank you.